Good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting of the ISD 191 Burnsville Eagan Savage School Board. The date is June 18th, 2020, and the time is 6:30 PM. I wanted to start by making a procedural note. Folks that are right here in Burnsville probably are noticing we have quite a storm coming through. We will do our best to get through the whole meeting as much as planned. If connectivity issues really become an issue, then we will reconvene Monday at 6:30 PM. So we'll hopefully get through all of this. Welcome everyone who is here. Thank you for joining us. With that, Director Hume, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start by approving the agenda tonight. I will take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Director Schott, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Kenny, would you please do the roll call?
Didi Courier.
Hi.
Scott Hume.
Hi.
Eric Miller. Abigail Alt.
Hi.
Jen Hallwigger.
Hi.
Leslie Chester.
Hi.
Darcy Schatz.
Hi.
And the motion carries. I will note that we are aware that Director Miller is having connectivity issues and he will be doing his best to stay joined as best he can. We'll start with the information portion of our meeting, starting with a report about FY21 board goals. Essentially, we have been working on this since February. The board decided that we wanted to establish goals for ourselves each year. And we first met on February 27th with MSBA in a retreat. And the MSBA guided a self-evaluation of the board and then stemming from those conversations came the development of SMART goals. April 23rd, we adjourned to a retreat again to discuss and develop the board goals. June 11th, we had a workshop to review our work and then tonight is the final report. Essentially, the goals, there are three goals. One relates to onboarding of board members through candidacy and then finally through to new board members being elected and welcomed aboard. Second, the second goal relates to board members as ambassadors and really making sure that we are helping in our roles to grow enrollment. And number three, to connect all board work to the 191 strategic plan. And anyone who's looking at an agenda for this evening will note that we now have the strategic directions noted next to a specific strategic direction noted next to each agenda item and to designate which strategic direction we're working on. So I wanted to thank everyone for all of your input and time. And I'm really excited that we do have goals and not simply goals, but SMART goals that for us to work on this year. Are there any comments that board members would like to make? Seeing none, okay, we will move to committee reports. And we'll start with the Policy Review Committee with Director Chester.
Hi, thank you Chair Alt. The Policy Review Committee met last week and reviewed a couple of, three policies and two are on the agenda represented tonight. The first on the consent agenda with minimal or non-substantial changes is a policy 615, which is testing accommodations modifications and exemptions for students with IEPs, Section 504 plans or LEPs. And so that's on the consent agenda going forward to this evening. And then under new business will be presented for approval on first reading a new policy 599 regarding memorials for deceased students and staff.
Thank you. Negotiations Committee with Director Schatz.
Negotiation Committee has no reports.
Thank you. Legislative Committee with Director Hallwigger.
No report from the Legislative Committee tonight.
Thank you. And Student Performance and Achievement Committee, there is no report. We will expect not to have meetings in July and we'll be back planning these reports starting in August. Are there any reports relating to board assignments, any other board assignments?
Yes, I have two reports, Chair Alt. The Association of Metropolitan School Districts. There were two meetings in May for AMSD on May 1st and May 22nd. This is the usual pattern for AMSD. There had been no April meeting due to the coronavirus. Both of the May meetings were Zoom meetings. The guest speaker for May 1st was the Minnesota Department of Education Deputy Commissioner, Dr. Heather Mueller. From the AMSD minutes, she talked in quotes about the current focus areas for MDE, including technology and internet access, school age care, graduation and summer programming, and noted that while many aspects of distance learning have gone well, there are many inequities and disparities that must be addressed, especially related to access to the technology necessary to engage in distant learning, end of quote. She also held a Q and A following her remarks. Later Paula Forbes from Reimagine Minnesota organized the participants into Zoom breakout rooms to have the opportunity to share their experiences with distance learning. Following a Google Doc of discussion questions, each group recorded notes which were briefly shared in a large group. As noted in the minutes, the conversations were rich and thought provoking. There were two major presentations at the May 22nd meeting. The first presented by Adash Uni from the Government Relations Department and Tom Melcher from the School Finance Department on the 2020 legislative session. The second was by Andre Proll, Agency Finance Director on the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, also known as the CARES Act. Both were very informative and detailed and can be found on the AMSD org website. I encourage you to look them up. All three presenters came from the Minnesota Department of Education. AMSD is recessed until fall, and that concludes my report on AMSD. ISD 917, the June meeting of 917 was held on June 9th. It was somewhat introspective and solemn as it was the first one in many years without Jill Lewis as chair. She passed away on June 7th after battling cancer for two years. Admired in her community of Inver Grove Heights as well as 917, she will be greatly missed. Following an official statement of teleconferencing board meetings and the good news reports by administrators, the board launched into its agenda, which included review of annual wellness goals, approval of the 2021 lunch contracts with our district 191 and Lancer Food Service, a review and approval of the 2021 school lunch prices, resolution terminating support employees, review of variances for 2021, resolution to approve the superintendent and one designee as the identified officials with authority to approve access to the External User Access Recertification System for MDE, review and approve contracts for lead teachers for special education, buyer, payroll specialist and executive assistant. We set the July meeting date and we did the annual performance review of the superintendent. 917 is on a fiscal year calendar unlike our district, which is on a calendar year. So it's organizational meeting will be this July, the 7th. This concludes my report on 917.
Thank you Director Courier. Are there any other reports? Seeing none, we'll turn to the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separation for separate consideration. Are there any items board members would like to separate for discussion? Hearing none, I will take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Courier. Ms. Kenny, will you please do the roll call?
Yes. Scott Hume.
Hi.
Eric Miller.
Hi.
Abigail Alt.
Hi.
Jen Hallwigger. Leslie Chester.
Hi.
Darcy Schatz.
Hi.
Didi Courier.
Hi.
And the motion carries. Thank you. New business, we'll start with Lisa Ryder, Executive Director of Business Services. We're being asked to approve contract for property casualty and liability insurance for 2020, 2021. Welcome Lisa.
Thank you Chair Alt, Director of the Board Superintendent Battle. I am referring to our annual contract that we engage in for our property casualty and liability insurance. So this is for the 2020 and 2021 school year. This is typically at this time of year in which we submit our applications in March and we have our agents review exactly what it is that's available to us. Typically, there's some rate increases, but then there's also an assumed property increase as well because if you go too many years without adjusting that, then it gets out of hand and you have jumps in your premiums. So we like to kind of keep that even Steven and kind of just move it up slowly and we usually do 2% per year. So that is included in the projections that you see before you. Upon approval by the board, what happens then is we then bind the coverage. We'd like to do that prior to July 1st, so everything is, there's no gap in our coverage. As you can see in the recommendation, there are many different aspects to our property casualty and liability insurance with many different companies listed. And the dollar amounts that you see there are the proposed premiums for those particular companies and the insurance coverage that we have. There is a full binder on this information that is provided to us as proposed. Then once it is bound, we receive all of the legal documents that go with that policy. As we compare this year to the previous year, it is $32,652 higher than the previous year and that equates to a 9.2% increase. Some of you may have heard that there is some increases, rate increases that are occurring particularly in the area of property. That was the biggest hit for us this year. That actually was more of a 16% increase and so it's been leveled off by some of the others not increasing. So this is the proposal for the 2021 school year and if I might read the recommendation. The recommendation is that the Board of Education approves the contracts for the property casualty and liability insurance for the 2020, 2021 year with affiliated FM Insurance Company, American Alternative Insurance Company, National Union Fire Insurance Company, Pittsburgh PA Auto Owners Insurance Company, Admiral Insurance Company and Beasley Insurance Company.
Thank you Lisa. I will take a motion from the crew.
So moved.
Moved by Director Schatz, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Kenny, will you please do the roll call?
Eric Miller.
Hi.
Abigail Alt.
Hi.
Jen Hallwigger.
Hi.
Leslie Chester.
Hi.
Darcy Schatz.
Hi.
Didi Courier.
Hi.
Scott Hume.
Hi.
And the motion carries. Thank you. We will stay with Lisa. Next item, we're being asked to approve committed fund balance for FY20.
So this is a look back for the current year that we're wrapping up. And the purpose of this particular item on your agenda is that the school board, per the Gatsby Statement Number 54, has the opportunity to commit funds. That means that the board can determine what it is that they would choose to calculate and have committed during the audit process, but it is referencing the year we're closing up and it must be done prior to the adoption of the, prior to the end of the school year, excuse me. So we want to make sure that this is something that is before you typically in June is when we do this. And we are asking for carryover as part of the committed fund balance calculation. We would include carryover funds of particular departments and areas so that we can keep track of the dollars that are maybe brought in, say for sale of goods and utilize those then for the projects that need to be taken care of in the areas that are relevant and related. Then there's the area that's new this year that is called out on your recommendation for student activity funds. There is action that has been taken that school districts were to by July 1st of 2019, incorporate the student activity funds. The challenge for us was that the, the information coming from Gatsby wasn't necessarily finalized until about January and then we had COVID hit. And so they, although they have deleted, Gatsby has for another year for it to become a requirement. The state of Minnesota has already moved to remove the account codes and to put everything, all districts with student activities under board control. So they, they want and expect that we are going to abide by that regardless and we will. But we also want to keep track of those balances separately so the student activity accounts know what their balances are at the end of any given fiscal year. So those would be calculated and kept track of under the committed funds. The pro pay funds, as has been the case in the past, will continue to also be calculated as part of the committed funds. So with that, the recommendation is that the Board of Education approves the commitment of fund balance for fiscal year 2020 to include fund balance resulting from carryover funds, student activity funds and pro pay funds.
Thank you Lisa. I'll take a motion.
And we'll so.
Moved by Director Schatz, seconded by Director Courier. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Kenny, please call the roll.
Abigail Alt.
Hi.
Jen Hallwigger.
Hi.
Leslie Chester.
Hi.
Darcy Schatz.
Hi.
Didi Courier.
Hi.
Scott Hume.
Hi.
Eric Miller.
Hi.
And the motion carries. Next, we are being asked to approve the FY21 adopted budget, staying with Lisa.
Thank you. So last week during our board meeting, we gave a report on this and you saw a PowerPoint presentation, which is included again this week for anyone in the public who would like to review it as well as anyone who has any questions. However, tonight I'm going to refer to the narrative, the recommendation itself. There's about a five-page document there which kind of lays out some of the details and the highlights of this particular budget and I'm just going to go through those very quickly. On the front of the recommendation is, and actually if you don't mind, would you mind if I go ahead and share my screen? Okay, so let's do that. Okay. Are you now seeing the recommendation on the screen before you? Yes, okay. All right, so as a part of the recommendation, we do lay out for all of the funds that we have, that we keep track of in whole, we show the total revenue and total expenditure of the budget that we have proposed for the board. In addition, I am adding a column in the last few years that shows what is that essential increase or decrease for a given year, the year of FY21. So what is the difference between revenue and expenditures for each of those funds? And so you can see that in the far right column. So with the general fund, you can see that we're proposing a budget that has a spend down of fund balance of just under $1 million. And you can see what it looks like then for each of the different funds. In addition, then we go on in the recommendation to highlight some of the key points. So for instance, what is it that we are utilizing for the general education formula? Per legislation, there was a 2% increase coming into the FY21 school year. So we are utilizing that dollar amount that was determined by legislation. And so that is used in calculating the revenue that is necessary for the general fund education aid. In addition, we have our class sizes. What were the numbers that we utilized for elementary, for middle school and for the high school? So you can see those figures as well. They are a one increase per board act, board guidance. And so that has been included in this budget before you. Number three, we're talking about the enrollment. It's really key to any budget that a school district is going to prepare because that is where much of the revenue is calculated is based off from that enrollment. You will see that we took a very conservative approach into going into FY21. This decision was made prior to pre-COVID and it is something that we took guidance from the board on as well. So we have a decrease of 440 average daily memberships utilized, a total of 7,887 for the early childhood through grade 12 counts. In addition, number four, we always take a reduction in the general fund for our health insurance costs that are related to implicit rate under the other post-employment benefits. This is the premium portion that is related to our retirees. We basically pay back the general fund from the revocable trust that we have and we had sold bonds with our community support back in, I'm sorry, 2009 is when the bonds were sold and it did not require community support at that time. Number five is reflective of the increase in our 2020, 2021 health insurance premiums. I'm sorry, but that number should actually read 2.75%. I must have an old version up on my screen here. My apologies for that. You will see that that recommendation is actually a 2.75% increase. Number six, the unassigned fund balance for the general fund is 6.86%, meaning that that is the amount. As you look at the total fund balance, it's unassigned and divided by the total expenditures in the general fund, you come up with that percentage. Our fund balance policy calls for an 8%. So this does require that approval of this proposed adopted budget will waive the defined minimum fund balance stated in board policy number 714. The adopted budget will be revised later in the 2021 school year to adjust for actual data relating to COVID-19 for the FY20 and FY21 impacts as we know them. Any federal updates, enrollment changes, staffing and audited fund balances. So that will happen in the fall. Prior to June 30th, the board needs to define the fund balances that would be in committing and you have done that for the 1920 school year. Additionally, prior to November 30th, and this is new this year, the board will need to approve through board resolution any fund balance transfers to be used to cover the COVID-19 costs for the fiscal year 20. So as we're conducting our audit work and coming up with fund balances, we will also then ask for your approval of those fund balance transfers prior to finalizing the audit work. As we move into a little bit further conversation, there's in the next few pages, discussion around each individual fund and the highlights around them. I won't spend the time going into detail on those except to point out that as you get to page three and I think it's on here, nope, it's page four, my apologies. We do have under the food and nutrition, food service, there are the rates for the meals identified for the 2021 school year and the proposed budget does not include any change in the rates for meals for next school year. So they remain the same as they were for the 1920 school year in our proposed budget. Under community education, you'll see that there's a very slight increase in the fund balance. It's very, very small, $857. We are basically trying to just break even in the community service fund. We do know that there are the assumptions that are made here. Let me jump down to that for a moment. Is the fact that the budget was developed in accordance with direction provided by the Board of Education and it does not assume a distance learning approach for the 2020, 2021 school year. Should that be a necessity, adjustments to the FY20 adopted budget will be necessary once we know what fall 2020 will require. There is potential for significant change as actual enrollment and staffing patterns are, you know, they're recognized. I mean, the reality is that we have constant changes in our staffing assignments and we adjust our staffing to best serve our students' needs. Therefore, the details that you see included in our documents will possibly and likely change in some areas. The proposed adopted budget however aligns with all of the projections that we've provided in this document as well as what the board has provided guidance on with regard to what comfort level there was for a resulting proposed budget. I would point out under the format that as has been the case, we continue to show our general fund budget broken down by budget units and that's a separate attachment. Also a separate attachment is a list of employees for each budget unit. This year we have another third attachment that is around additional information that people can take a look at as well related to the general fund. And there, all of this will be culminated together with the PowerPoint that you saw and that is also attached. That will all be included in a adopted budget book, which we will, once the board has approved this budget, we would then go to print with the final documents and inclusive in that would be a narrative for each budget unit, which you do not currently see in our materials. That just takes a little bit longer time to basically go through and make sure everything's accurate. So that gives us a little bit of time if we are preparing that for you by August. Having gone through this recommendation, I would go back to the first page. And
That one.
And I will read the recommendation that the Board of Education approves the 2020, 2021 adopted budget, providing all funds revenues of $175,7662 and all funds expenditures of $175,489,038.
Thank you Lisa. I will take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester, second.
Second.
Seconded, I think that was Director Hume. Questions or discussion? And if you would use your hand raised feature if there are questions or comments. Seeing none, I do have a statement that I've prepared. Tonight, this board will take action on a budget which reflects our responsibility to be fiscally responsible stewards of taxpayer money. Each June, we complete many months of discussion and debate, work which is focused on our responsibility to live within our means and provide the best possible education and growth experiences to our students. This year however, is much like last year unfortunately, in many ways. We have heard from our staff and our community, challenging this board and school district to attract and retain a diverse workforce, most specifically among our teaching staff. I personally extend these same expectations to all employees district-wide. This is our work, and this is our goal. Districts like 191 have successfully established practices to attract, hire, mentor, and support talented, caring employees who reflect the students we serve. State statute, PRA, and tenure mandates create barriers in retaining staff. State and federal governments maintain unfunded mandates and provide inadequate funding for education. Beyond these two realities, which, by the way, can only be changed through legislation, 191 must re-sharpen our focus, become a destination district for families, and grow enrollment. In the absence of a positive shift in each of these three areas, 191 will continue to lose the best and brightest and the most diverse workforce to date. Our work as a school board is multifaceted and complex and requires heart and dedication. We do our best to support all of our students, embracing opportunity, advocacy, and action where we can, moving around and beyond barriers that we might encounter along the way where possible. Despite the setbacks reflected in the FY21 budget, we will continue to follow the tenets of our strategic plan. We will focus ourselves on becoming the district of choice again for our families to best serve the needs of our students and our community. In so doing, we will see the fruits of our efforts over time with a high-quality, diverse teaching and workforce. Thank you. With that, Ms. Kenny, would you please call the roll?
Jen Hallweger.
Hi.
Leslie.
Hi.
Dersie Schatz.
Hi.
DeeDee Carrier.
Hi.
Scott Hume.
Hi.
Eric Miller.
Hi.
Abigail Alt.
Hi.
And the motion carries. Thank you very much, and thank you, Lisa, and your staff for everything that you've done. Next, we are being asked to approve proposed revisions and read adopt the unchanged language in the Information Technology Specialist's Master Agreement with Stacy Silvine, Executive Director of Human Resources. Welcome, Stacy.
Unfortunately, Stacy is unable to attend this evening as he's representing the district in another meeting, and so he's asked for me to cover for this and the next item.
Thank you.
So, yes, you're welcome. So the district reached a tentative agreement for a new two-year contract with the Information Technology Specialist on May 19th of 2020. There are 10 members that are currently within that unit. During the collective bargaining process, five language items were on the table for discussion. IT ratified the agreement in late May. The major language items that were agreed upon in the tentative agreement include language on vacation time, language on fair share, which was a necessity given our change in law, and steps for both years, plus adjustments to the 403B. The economic terms agree to include a 1% increase each year on career increment steps and a two-year increased cost of $27,230. MSBA two-year package increase, which is the formula used to make comparisons across the board, was a 2.45% increase. With that, the recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the revisions and read adopt the unchanged language in the 2019-2021 Master Agreement with the Information Technology Specialists.
Thank you, Lisa. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Director Carrier, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Miller. Questions? Seeing none, Ms. Kenny, would you please call the roll?
Leslie Chester.
Hi.
Dersie Schatz.
Hi.
DeeDee Carrier.
Hi.
Scott Hume.
Hi.
Eric Miller.
Hi.
Abigail Alt.
Hi.
Jen Hallweger.
And the motion carries. Thank you. Staying with Lisa, we're being asked to approve the revisions and read adopt the unchanged language in the Burnsville Association of Educational Assistance Master Agreement would be for 2019 through 2021.
Thank you. The district is also bringing forward a tentative agreement on a new two-year contract with our education assistance, which was reached on May 20th. There are 214 assistants within the unit. During the collective bargaining process, 10 language items were on the table for discussion. The Burnsville Association of Educational Assistance, known as BAEA, ratified the agreement earlier this month. Language items that were included were deleting some dated language revision to the fair share language, as I mentioned earlier, for the other agreement as well, modified language on long-term disability, a condensed salary schedule to improve the pay equity submission, and steps for both years. Economically, a 1% increase year one and two, year one and two, a 1% increase, including longevity contribution. A two-year increase cost for this particular group was $668,000. The MSBA two-year package increase is a 6.20%. With that, the recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the revisions and read adopt the unchanged language in the 2019-2021 Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Burnsville Association of Educational Assistance.
Thank you, Lisa. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Director Schatz, second.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Questions? In, Ms. Kenny, please call the roll.
Dersie Schatz.
Hi.
DeeDee Carrier.
Hi.
Scott Hume.
Hi.
Eric Miller.
Hi.
Abigail Alt.
Hi.
Jen Hallweger.
Hi.
Leslie Chester.
Hi.
And the motion carries. Thank you. Next, we are turning to policy. We're being asked to approve on a first-reading basis, New Policy 599, Memorials for Deceased Students or Staff. And I'd like to welcome Brian Gersich, Assistant Superintendent, and Dana Thompson, Special Education Supervisor. Welcome.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Superintendent Battle, Board of Directors, for this opportunity to present this evening. Just because there have been some connectivity things, Cheryl, I'll just keep my eyes on you periodically if you just want to raise your hand if something happens, so I know to stop and check on that, just because, again, there is weather throughout there. I am joined this evening by Dana Thompson, and I want to just acknowledge on the front end appreciation for Dana, as she led her team of school psychs in the development of this policy. So again, it is something that's brand-new. It did not come from an MSBA model. So this is kind of a newer process for us, and there was a lot of work that went into this and quite a few questions, various versions of this. So thanks to Dana, and you'll hear more from Dana about how she led the team and part of the pieces of this policy that were discussed and why they ended up this way. I also want to offer my thanks to the Policy Committee as well. Again, as a new policy, it took various versions and a lot of feedback from the group to ensure that at least the language was consistent and something that could be supported. So thanks for the time and dedication to by the Policy Committee in running through this. Throughout my career in educational leadership, I think one of, if not the most challenging things we deal with is loss of life, particularly when it impacts young people. You know, young people are not supposed to have tragic events and have their friends taken away from them at a young age, and death is difficult all the way through. But when we deal with loss of life within schools, it is difficult. And because of that, we need to be very deliberate about how we support our students and sign up some of the practices that we go through. And I know that in my time here, I appreciate Dana and Stephanie White and the way they really do rush to support students and have things in place for the emotional needs of our students. But just from my own experiences in leadership as a principal and a superintendent, I also know from those experiences that we need to be deliberate about the concept of memorials and how we are consistent about how death is acknowledged and the means of how and when those things are acknowledged as well, which is a part of what this policy stems from. We're not here to judge kids in how they've died or in other experiences. Again, in my past history, sometimes there was a debate of how and how frequently and what duration things are memorialized based on the popularity and impact of the student or the methodology of death. If a student was tragically killed in a car accident versus died of disease at a young age or died of recreational drug use, it creates this debate over what are we going to allow memorializing and what are we not? As a system, I believe it's not our position to judge. Life is tragically lost. Any life that's lost is tragic, regardless of means, and that's just kind of where some of that spirit comes from as well. I also want to acknowledge that as a school community, we had a number of occasions over the course of this school year where we did experience loss of life of young people that were connected to our schools. This inception was not because of that. We started talking about some of these concepts before this school year started, but certainly those outlined some examples of how it really could have helped our administrators and leaders navigate this if we had some governing practices. So even as you discuss through the pieces of it, you know, if their change is recommended or otherwise, I would just advocate we have some governing practices on how we approach these things is really part of what could support our leadership in avoiding some, these are stressful times, particularly for the friends and family of the deceased. And when we have governing practices, it can help take some of the emotion out of our decision-making practices. What I'd like to do is just give you a very brief overview of a couple of the technical aspects of the policy that I'd like to point out, and then I'm going to, again, invite Dana to talk through some of the development of the policy and how, so you understand how that was developed. And initially, what I will do, just again, briefly refer you to General Statement of Policy, which is Section 3 of the policy, Part C to start with, which talks about temporary memorials. This will tell us what, when, where, and how long we would allow various memorials for deceased students. And that would say temporary memorials displayed for one week or until the funeral, displayed in a common area similar to a media center. And I'll allow Dana maybe to talk through the why of an area where students may be able to avoid, should they choose to do so. But again, the piece that I want to outline is we're allowing temporary memorials in a specifically designated location for a very specific period of time. Part D then talks about permanent memorials, and essentially what we're talking about there is permanent memorials become exclusively things like endowments, scholarships, or educational items, not items like the memorial tree or a specific piece of property that gets placed out there for a permanent period of time. So essentially, what we're saying with this policy is we would allow temporary memorials during that grieving process, but not things that would become a permanent fixture as a part of our property. And then the last thing I'll point out is just Section H does talk about some other activities, questions and things that came up for us over the course of this year did include things like graduation recognition or moments of silence. So you'll see that those are also outlined as a part of the policy. Now, again, I would like to invite Dana to come through, talk a little bit about the development of the process that went into this.
Thank you, Mr. Gersich. Good evening, Cheryl, Superintendent Battle and Board of Directors. And I want to thank Brian for his kind words to me, but I want to forward a lot of that on to the school psych team. There is a group that consistently impresses me, and in this case, they did not disappoint. They really came together and were a major part of developing this policy. So in 2019, Fall 2019, Stephanie asked me to work with the school psych team to develop this policy. We, I did an initial draft based on the Prior Lake Savage Board policy. So I went through our neighboring districts and found all of their existing board policies that had to do with memorials. It wasn't universal. For example, Minneapolis-St. Paul, I could not find anything for them, but a lot of our local neighboring committees such as I Like Savage, Lakeville, Apple Valley, they did have policies. So I brought those to the school psych team. The first policy I wrote was basically the Prior Lake Savage one switched to Burnsville, just so we had a structure to work from. We then went through that policy, had several discussion points, talked about what we needed to learn more about, what without looked good, what we were confused by, and assigned different psychs and different groups to work on those sort of things and to bring additional resources to the team. So we made this part of our department meetings, which meets once a month. It was a regular feature of this. We went through a few different processes, bringing in different resources. We were ready to finalize the draft and give to Brian right about when we had to switch everything we were doing this year because of COVID-19. So it is a little delay to get into. Because of that, it was supposed to be done earlier in the spring. So additional resources we pulled together included the NASS policy on memorials, the National Association of School Psychologists. And a really important one that we discovered somewhat late in the process was called After Suicide: A Toolkit for Schools. That became our primary resource in addressing the suicide aspect of this policy, which is likely going to be the most controversial aspect, because there's a lot of debate about what to do after suicide, particularly when it comes to memorializing. And that booklet was written by the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, the Suicide Prevention Resource Center, and the Education Development Center, and it's endorsed by the National Association of School Psychologists, the National Association of Secondary School Principals, and the American School Counselor Association. We didn't take it as gospel. We used what we saw in there. We looked at additional resources, and we did borrow quite a lot of wording from that document into the suicide section of our memorial policy. So under Brian's direction, we finalized a draft during COVID-19. It went through the Policy Committee. A few changes were made, excellent feedback provided. And we got to this point. We're lending to you this hopefully finalized draft policy, but very open to feedback and changes as they come. Any questions for the board? Thank you, Cheryl.
So we've already read the recommendation. Before we take questions, I'll take a motion.
Almost.
Moved by Director Schatz, seconded by, I believe that was Director Chester. And I did want to make a note that Director Hallweger has been having internet connectivity issues, and she has logged off for the evening. Next, getting back to the policy conversation, are there questions or comments for either Dana or Brian?
Not, more of a comment, just to add on to the presentation that what was stated was emphasis on students, but it's also reflected that a lot of tragic incidents also happen regarding beloved staff. And so this policy really encompasses how we memorialize and recognize both deceased students and staff in this policy.
Thank you, Director Chester. Director Schatz?
Yep, and I will just add my thanks to Brian, Dana, and everyone who's involved with this. It's not easy. I've written many policy manuals in my life, and it is not easy to write something new like this. So kudos to you for managing that process and also managing the, it was kind of you to say there were some feedback from the Policy Committee, but we are not shy with our colleagues. And so there was lots of feedback from Policy Committee. So thank you. The final draft is excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Schatz. Director Carrier?
Give me the discussion around the staff, not the contributions that can be given. That section, permanent memorials, will be limited. What kind of discussions happened around that, or what was it like? And the reason I'm asking is, when I was a teacher a long time ago, we planted a tree when the principal passed away. I mean, that was kind of a big deal at the time. So I noticed that would be something that wouldn't be allowed under this, under this policy.
Yeah, and I'll just speak to that briefly as part of that consistency piece, and then certainly Dana, if you had something to offer. Part of that for me, Director Carrier, is the need for policy inconsistency. Again, over the course of my career, I ran into those debates where a young person who died tragically serving our country overseas, and people wanted a memorial tree, and of course, there were a lot and people wanted a memorial tree. And of course, there were a lot of people that came out to celebrate that. And then there was a request for a memorial tree for a young person who had died because of um, a recreational drug overdose. And there was a significant debate and even some pushback about what are we memorializing? And that's where I come back to those statements of any loss of life is tragic. And in those situations, that lack of consistency creates a debate about the value of life. And it was difficult as a school leader at that time to navigate those complexities. And that's where I think coming back to, let's look at a policy and let's make some determinations on what that consistency can look like. Uh, is, is almost some of the reason for this so that the beloved principal versus the one who maybe didn't have a career that a lot of people were excited to get that memorial tree or other kinds of things out there. And what is that speaking to? And is that, is that something we want to support? Maybe I'm being a little extreme on that one, but I think you understand some of what I'm talking about.
No, I, I get it, but I thank you. Thank you.
And if I could just add, um, just one thing as part of that policy, existing memorials established prior to the updates policy won't be affected. So some of the things that do exist, some of those beloved trees, benches, um, they can remain. This, this does not go backwards in time and you know, we have to remove those things. But moving forward, as Brian said, consistency import is important, understanding that every life is precious is important. And we can't um, really ethically, morally, and practically offer what we'd want to every student if we're doing things like permanent memorials consistently.
The one other thing, if I could just note, because it's somewhat related, this came up during the discussion by the policy committee was how does this potentially uh, conflict with policy 899, which is about the naming of sites? And that is a different policy and a different procedure. If there was, for example, a new building that was built and it was going to be named after someone, it talks in that policy about that person having made a significant contribution in their field, in the community. So under that, it would be governed by that policy comparatively to a memorial. If that happens to be a part of that naming process that is governed by the school board.
Thank you. Director Schatz, I just want to check to make sure that you, that your hand isn't actually up.
Or do you? I'm having trouble getting it down.
Gotcha. No problem. Any other questions? Um, I guess I just had a couple of comments, again echoing the thanks to everyone um, and for being proactive and really thinking about honoring and celebrating the lives of um, our students and beloved staff and um, that really it's, um, I believe that all of it does represent equity um, in terms of consistency and, and, and celebrate and life celebrations. So thank you very much for that. With that, um, Ms. Kenny, would you please call the roll?
Didi Courier?
Hi.
Scott Hume?
Hi.
Eric Miller?
Hi.
Abigail Alt?
Hi.
Leslie Chester?
Hi.
Dersi Schatz?
Hi.
And the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we're, thank you very much. And uh, next we're being asked to approve uh, the contract for Nicollet Middle School Special Education Bathroom Project, returning to Lisa Rider.
Thank you. Is it the Nicollet or is it the William Byrne?
I had, oh, William Byrne. You're right. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So thank you. Um, on Friday, April 17th, 2020, a restroom addition proposal was received from Rack Construction Incorporated. We have a need as we have closed three schools for next year to relocate some of our focus programs to the existing schools. Um, and we need to make sure that, that there are restrooms that are close enough and available for the students in those programs. Therefore, there are, there were originally four different locations that we were looking into. Uh, two of them have been brought for, for you tonight. The other two we have, we have held off on due to the high cost of the projects. But these two, we feel we, we need to move forward with. This one is for William Byrne Special Education Restroom Project. And as I said, we received a proposal. We're utilizing our relationship with Sourcewell Cooperative Contract where they have already gone through the process of a, a bidding process to determine rates of various different contractors. Then what we can do is we can utilize that access to these various contractors, show them our locations, explain the project to them in advance of them providing a quote. And that allows us to stay very, very close to the amount that they give us. And we have not seen change orders on the other projects that they have done for us. So we really like that idea. So as you take a look at this one, the quote, um, proposal we received is in the amount of $187,818.75 for a 2021 restroom addition project at William Byrne. Um, it is a special education project. So Stephanie has gone through the process with Minnesota Department of Education to seek approval for the use of our federal funds for this project. And that has been approved. So the funding will come from federal special ed funds. And with that, the recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the William Byrne Special Education 2021 restroom addition project in the amount of $187,818.75 to Rack Construction Incorporated.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Director Schatz, second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Miller. Questions or comments?
I just have one quick question. So it says 2021 restroom. So would that be done like next summer, a year from now?
Uh, no. So our, when it says 2021, it's for the
Fiscally or 21?
Yes, yes. So we're going to begin this project as soon as it's approved. In fact, they're ready to roll next week if it's approved. And then with that, we're hoping to still have everything done by, by September.
Great. And this is the same for the next one, because then I will I have the same question.
It is. Same for the next one.
Thank you. Any other questions? I appreciate knowing, Lisa, that we haven't had any change orders. It's always, it's always good to hear that.
Yes, we can't, Glenn, uh, Glenn retired, there can't be any change orders.
That's true. That's true. Um, Ms. Kenny, would you please um, call the roll?
Scott Hume?
Hi.
Eric Miller?
Hi.
Abigail Alt?
Hi.
Leslie?
Hi.
Dersi Schatz?
Hi.
Didi Courier?
Hi.
And the motion carries. Um, turning to approving a contract for Nicollet Middle School Special Education Bathroom Projects.
Thank you. Um, you've heard the background related to William Byrne. It all applies to the Nicollet Middle School project as well. Uh, same date, uh, the restroom addition proposal was also received from Rack Construction Incorporated. In this um, particular location's amount was $184,546.82 for the restroom addition project at Nicollet Middle School. Um, again, through the Sourcewell Contract and um, special education project that has been approved for federal funding. With that, the recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the Nicollet Middle School Special Education 2021 restroom addition project in the amount of $184,546.82 to Rack Construction Incorporated.
Thank you. Uh, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Director Courier, second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. Questions or comments? Seeing none, um, Ms. Kenny, please call the roll.
Eric Miller?
Hi.
Abigail Alt?
Hi.
Leslie Chester?
Hi.
Dersi Schatz?
Hi.
Didi Courier?
Hi.
Scott Hume?
Hi.
And the motion carries. Uh, final item on our new business section of the meeting. We're being asked to approve contract, a contract with Normandale Community College for post-secondary enrollment options, also known as PSEO services for 2020, 2021 school year.
Thank you. Uh, so you may recall that it was about maybe three or four years ago or that we had arranged for what we call an income contract. And this came from a few other districts around us that had started utilizing them, particularly through Normandale Community College. And it has spread also to Inver Hills where we utilize it there as well. Tonight before you is the Normandale Community College Agreement for Post-Secondary Enrollment Options. And utilizing the income contract allows for us to be billed directly from the community college. And we pay the rate of $225 per credit hour. The other method of doing this would be to do the more traditional method that actually involves Minnesota Department of Education in the process. And then everything rolls through our um, our gen ed revenue. And yet there's some portion of that process that ends up instead being kind of removed from income that the college would receive and also income that we otherwise might have access to. So we, we chose to go the income method. Some years ago, it has proven to be far better than if, if we had done the traditional. So we want to continue this process. This is a one-year agreement. The last time I believe it was a three-year agreement. And the reason for that is they are a little bit concerned that the 225 rate may not necessarily uh, hold true for them in the future. And they're in the process of analyzing that. So therefore they're asking for only a one-year agreement. The Inver Hills is not before you this evening, but will be coming to you in August as their timing is just slightly different than the Normandale Community College. So with that, the recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the income contract with the state of Minnesota, acting through its Board of Trustees of the Minnesota State Colleges and Universities on behalf of Normandale Community College for PSEO for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Director seconded by, looks like Director Miller. Uh, questions or comments? Seeing none, um, Ms. Kenny, um, please call the roll.
Abigail Alt?
Hi.
Leslie Chester?
Hi.
Dersi Schatz?
Hi.
Didi Courier?
Hi.
Scott Hume?
Hi.
Eric Miller?
Hi.
And the motion carries. Thank you. I will now declare us adjourned. Uh, we are going to um, a workshop next. Uh, we have three different, we have several different items. Um, first, we will be receiving um, information on open facilities planning 2020 and next steps. Uh, then we will be discussing FY21 Superintendent Goals. And finally, um, the board will be reviewing our um, board project or planning calendar um, to get board members input. Um, Wes, do we need to pause for a minute? Or is this pause enough?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's okay. Do you, I'm, I'm guessing we, we've had enough pause for you to break between the regular board meeting and the workshop?
I believe so.
Okay, that's
Erin, Erin didn't go over this with me.
Got it. Then we should be fine. I'm sure enough times passed. Um, so with that, we'll turn to uh, Dr. Battle and uh, Stephanie White, Director of Student Support Services. And welcome back, Lisa Ryder. Uh, we will be discussing open facilities planning 2020 next steps.
Thank you, Chair Alt, uh, members of the board. Uh, Lisa Ryder will be sharing her screen for our report tonight. Um, it's been almost a year when we began this process of facilities planning. And so the report tonight um, will take us into our next steps as we go into next school year. Um, and so we'll have updates um, from Stephanie White as well as Lisa Ryder. So we'll go to the next slide. For agenda tonight, next slide, Lisa. Thank you for our agenda tonight. Um, we are bringing forth again several familiar slides from our previous facilities presentations. Um, we'll start with our purpose, very familiar uh, components, the guiding change and commitments. Uh, we'll review the options from the last facilities presentation on April 23rd. Um, then we will once again review the criteria for consideration um, and criteria for sale of outlots from that April 23rd um, meeting. And then uh, Stephanie White um, and Lisa will give us some updates on the Cedar School Lease uh, progress, uh, uses for Sioux Trail. Um, and then we'd like to spend the bulk of the time with the board um, to allow discussion about the direction for the sale of River Ridge. We have a proposed um, process for um, choosing a broker for that sale. Um, and then uh, discussion about the request for proposal process for the sale of outlots. And then continue the board discussion about Metcalfe. And we like to share tentative timeline that will begin in August and through next year. And then next steps uh, from the board about direction for staff and I to complete uh, to begin again in August. And with that, uh, Lisa, next slide. So the purpose of the facilities, uh, this part of facilities planning is really to maximize the use of property assess assets while leveraging our resources. And then the key question, what are our district needs, not only in the short term, but the board has had this discussion about really looking at long-term. And also the purposes as always, things consider the needs of our students' families there. Uh, the next slide is once again our guiding change document um, about what is acceptable, what's unacceptable means. Um, and considering the context, reality and our expected results. Um, our commitments have remained the same throughout this process, and that's on the next slide. Um, first and foremost, students, uh, their learning, uh, engaging our community, having that open and transparent communication, decision-making, looking at our financial picture, so cost effectiveness. And then uh, attending to our equity agenda. Uh, we do not want to create inequities of racially and socially economic identifiable schools. Um, the next slide uh, is a recap of the direction the board gave us on April 23rd. Uh, keep Diamond Head Education Center, lease uh, Cedar School. Um, continue to start discussions with 917. Uh, leverage Sioux Trail and MW Savage either for internal or external partner use. Sail River, sell River Ridge and sell the outlots at Diamond Head and Metcalfe for redevelopment. And then uh, tonight we'll begin that further discussion about Metcalfe. Uh, next slide. So considerations, uh, this was from April 23rd. Um, you need to, uh, the board is looking at their policy and as well as financial. And what you, your end result as was um, mentioned or captured in the guiding change document. So what are the results you're considering? Uh, next slide um, is information that was presented also on April 23rd. Um, uh, this is not a comprehensive list and we may have some additional criteria from this discussion tonight that the board is considering. So financial, um, our academic programming, our community program implications. Um, we are always looking for ways to increase enrollment. Um, the board has declared that uh, we do not want a pre-K12 competing organization. However, we would consider uh, higher education. Uh, the next slide continues with some of that criteria. Um, of course aligning with city planning. Um, consider the impact and of course adhering to all of our federal guidelines, particularly the American with Disabilities Act. Um, and we really are not, we're trying to limit the additional expenditure. And then um, as one of our strategic directions is to really uh, capitalize on our partnerships. So we do not want negative impact. Uh, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to uh, Lisa Ryder and Stephanie White, who can give you some updates. Um, so first Lisa's going to share an update about leasing Cedar School.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Uh, Cedar School has contacted us and we've been in recent contact
Cedar School has contacted us and we've been in recent contact about this topic. Intermediate 917 has notified us that their intent is to delay any discussion at this time of additional leasing of space at the Cedar location. There will likely be no interest in leasing the full Cedar building until 2022, 2023 at the earliest. Our current agreement, just as a reminder, does take us through June of 2022 for the portion of the Cedar building that is currently leased by Intermediate 917. That is the update on the Cedar School. And with that, I will turn the slide over to the next and have Stephanie step in.
Good evening, School Board and Board Chair. I'm here to provide an update on Sioux Trail. Today was a big day for us as we're planning for the fall in that we're beginning to get some guidance from the Minnesota Department of Ed as well as the Minnesota Health Department. And as we move towards fall and consider the scenarios that they are asking for us to plan for, Sioux Trail will be one of those buildings that we will be able to think about in terms of space and if there is a need there. And so our, um, our wanderings and conversations around that have to do with these three questions. How can we maximize that resource and make sure we remain flexible and responsive? Childcare is one of our, um, wanderings moving forward, both provided internally as well as our community partners. Will the 2021 school year recommendations from MDE change our considerations and priorities? That work is just beginning, like I said, due to the guidance coming out today in terms of what will our space needs be within our district? And finally, will our community needs change based on those recommendations? And we're keeping our ears open and listening to the needs of families as, as we continue to move through summer towards fall, specifically in the areas of recommendation of, or specifically in recommendation and childcare. Today, we had a meeting with one of our community partners, Head Start, who is interested in, still is interested in, in having a classroom within our school district. And so depending on what evolves with Sioux Trail and our other sites, we will continue to, to partner and meet with them to develop that, that partnership.
Next, I'd like to take you to the conversation around a sale of River Ridge, for example. In performing a sale of one of our properties, that meaning that what we're expecting is that we're going to hand the property over to the buyer and they are taking it as is. And so with that concept in mind, the first thing we need to consider is the selection of a broker. It's a real estate transaction and we're recommending as administration that the selection process for a broker could, it could be similar to the process that was used when selecting a construction management firm in 2015. So I'd like to walk through the next couple of slides, that process, just to give you a sense of what that might look like in this scenario. Again, it's just in, it's a starting point for us, right? So as we take a look at the approach that we utilized for a construction management firm selection, we assembled a committee. So similarly, we would look to assemble a broker committee who will conduct interviews and vet the brokers that come before us to either make a recommendation to the school board or to move it forward to the full board to interview. Those are two options that could be decided upon. When we take a look at what we did previously in 2015, you see a list here of what that committee might look like and it's very similar to what was utilized back then. You will see that the city of Burnsville representation is added on here. When we did the construction management firm, we had our architects at the table because they were able to answer the technical questions that were being asked by the various different construction management firms. Similarly, there may be questions that come to us from brokers or interested brokers who they just want to maybe know some of the, the city's perspective or, or possibly some coding questions. So it helps to have that representation present during that process. A suggestion then is listed here for what that broker selection committee may look like. Beyond that, then we'd also need to determine internally, like who in our staff will handle the communications with the respondents to make sure that nothing is missed, right? We want to be complete about it. We'd need to set up a timeline. We would need to identify a list of possible brokers to send an invitation of the request for proposal for broker services. And sometimes that's the tricky part because you don't want to miss people who are interested. So we'd want to make sure that we're kind of utilizing a process to, to capture as many as we can think of who may be interested, at least in sending the invitation out. And then who responds is up to them, right? And you finalize that RFP. So here's where we would have a formal written request for proposal. It would list out what it is that we need as end goals. In this case, for example, we'd be looking for somebody to be able to sell a piece of property. Okay, so we'd want to spell that out for them and any of the criteria that the board would want to make sure is followed or abided by, we'd want to make sure it's clear in that RFP. There are examples out there and part of the work we would need to do is, is gather some examples to, just to make sure we're not missing anything and make that RFP as complete as possible. We would also want to communicate the information to all, all the people interested indicating, setting up for them the timelines and the requirements, the proposals. It's important that everybody knows before they make their decision that they want to participate or they don't, what it is that we're requiring as far as that timeline and the requirements. So laying that all out as part of that RFP is important too, because it gives them clear guidance and communication as to exactly what it is that they'd have to do if they want to be successful and just working through our process. Additionally, we would consider holding an optional tour of the property that always helps people to get a visual and see things. Receiving proposals would also be a requirement. We'd set a date and we'd expect to see it by that date with a timestamp as well. Because if it comes in late, then you get other concerns as to, well, how come, how come they got more time than we did? So we want to make sure we're, we're fair around that process. And we'd be considering checking references as well as we get into the process. The reference checking may occur after holding those interviews and miss that bullet, sorry. So when you hold the interviews in the past on the construction management firm process, I remember that we had written books that we received. And so it took us a couple of days as a committee to also have the chance to go and go through and read those. And we generated a whole list of questions that may, may come up that we want to make sure we ask. But we also afforded them the opportunity to give a presentation. So it wasn't like a strict interview of ask the question, they answer, it was give us your presentation. And then what about our work questions weren't covered in their presentation that we still want to know about? And so we had that opportunity to make sure that the interview included that kind of full scale of things. And we had the opportunity to really thoughtfully read through their proposals. After the interviews were held previously on the construction management side, we did call and check references then. Previously, when we went through this process, a final recommendation was what was brought forward to the full school, school board. As what you saw earlier, it could instead be that the school board may, may want to actually have that process of an interview. And so that's, that's just something that can occur and it's up to, up to the board to decide exactly how they'd like to see that handled. And I think that, let's see.
Let's see.
That, that concludes everything related to the broker selection. And I did keep in mind when, when completing this, the thought of a sale of say River Ridge. So just trying to kind of keep that in mind. Now I'll turn this back over to Dr. Battle for further conversation.
So the next few slides are addressing possible processes for sale of the outlots or sale of entire property for redevelopment. And so just wanted to review the, what a request for proposal is. So you can get proposals of various ideals that align with both the desires of the school board and the city's expectations for the property determined. And so we are recommending after a review that we engage in using an external experience consultant to facilitate the process. Because we do not want to have developers who do not have the financial backing already in place. And so an external entity goes through all of that processes with the criteria and works with the city that the city is really not going to approve this ideal. It does not align with the school district. And then with that process, the board could have a facilities task force committee with board representation to actually interview those that have been vetted. And after the interviews, that committee could make a recommendation to the full, full board. On the next slide, another option for the board would be a subcommittee where you would interview those that have been vetted to develop and narrow down to just top two or three. And the full board then listens to the developer's proposals. And another, the last option is you can have every developer come. And you would do the screening interviewing based on the request for proposal criteria. And then you would take action on a final recommendation. We also consulted with MSBA as well as board officers. And so they gave us ideals from other districts about what that vetting process, uh, some of the components. And that's what you see on the next slide. Really determining how many are interested. So they would get the background information, data for the plans, the purchase price, and then identify qualified developers. Next slide. And so that's the process we are recommending that an external consultant complete. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Ryder, who's going to review slides we received on April 23rd related to the financial impact. And this was for, if you look at the last piece, sell 10 acres of Metcalf. So that's why we wanted to review this slide, just for the sale of the 10 acres of Metcalf. And I'll turn it over to Lisa.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. So under option five, this was, we're staying in place at Diamond Head Education Center. We're retrofitting for best and we're selling River Ridge and selling 10 acres of Metcalf. The assumptions here were that there would be no sale proceeds for Diamond Head, obviously, since we're not selling it, we're staying put. The next line showed the million dollars assumed, excuse me, for the sale proceeds for River Ridge. And then assumed sale proceeds for Metcalf of a million dollars. Keep in mind that the sale proceeds of excess land at Metcalf and the same would be true even here at Diamond Head, but if you're selling just land and that's all, the land is not tied into any of our building bonds that are outstanding. So in those cases, you see an asterisk on that line item because it is possible that those could be available, those proceeds for just straight land available for general fund use without legislative action. Broker fees for selling of River Ridge. So when we engage a broker, what will happen is the broker fee that they will charge us, we won't pay out of our pocket, it will instead come out of the proceeds. And so you're showing here, or they are showing here, Ellers was a $60,000 assumed, 6%, right? Then you have the offsetting debt for River Ridge. So when you sell a, an entire property, then you need to acknowledge the fact that that debt that you have on that property is something that still needs to be paid back. So if the proceeds are less than the amount of that debt, then that tells us the proceeds must go into our debt service. To the extent the proceeds exceed the amount of offsetting debt that remains, that then could go into the general fund at a current state statute and without any additional legislation. So our existing River Ridge debt as of June 30, 2020 is 2,785,237. That's why you see that listed there. The next line was our moving costs that were assumed. And that's $100,000 to move the best program from that building. There's a lot of, there's a lot of tables, chairs, equipment, things of that nature. But it's not so much modular furniture that requires us to bring somebody in and actually take it down and put it back up. And then there's the retrofit for best. And depending upon where that location is, that, that amount can vary. So we gave just an assumption of $300,000. So what, what we're trying to show here is with the sale proceeds involved for the River Ridge and for the assumption for Metcalf of 10 acres, netted against all of these other assumed costs, that net financial impact could be looked at as 1,245,237. I will note, that's not the cash difference, okay? Because when you have offsetting debt, it just tells us where the proceeds need to go. The debt has a schedule that takes us out to around 2035 and that schedule doesn't change. So we will continue our principal and interest payment debt on that debt that is related regardless. And it doesn't get like moved up as might be the case when you sell a home, for example. Instead, it just, it's still there, okay? The question is just whether or not the proceeds go into the debt service fund or whether they go into the general fund. Below, then you also see that they were trying to equate. If you have too many dollars in proceeds, how does that compare to the debt payments? And they're showing that that's about the equivalency of two debt, two years of debt payments. Additionally, if you weren't considering the debt in the picture, because it's not like the debt's actually reducing the cash inflow, then we're trying to show then that that impact then is for the debt service fund, you'd see an increase of the $2 million, net the 60,000, right? For the broker fee, and that's 1,940,940,000. And the impact to the general fund would be the outflow of cash for the moving and retrofit cost assumptions that you see there are 400,000. Well, I hope that helps to explain the numbers there on option five. And if I may go to the next slide. Would you like me to continue, Dr. Battle? Okay, the pros and cons that we had identified, and this was not changed from our, our April 23rd meeting, but it does identify some of those pros and cons related to this particular option. And you see those that are in blue that are really specific to this particular option. I won't read through those. Next, we have 5A. So this is a little bit different. This is what was proposed in our, laid out in our April 23rd meeting as well. But this one actually is selling Metcalf. Now we are including the building itself. And so under this proposal, the sale proceeds of Diamond Head Education Center is still zero. Sale proceeds for Metcalf are now assumed to be 2,625,000. The offsetting debt, because now it's not just land, now we're including the building. So that's the 8,208,514. So that tells us if your proceeds are less than that amount, you're going to see those proceeds go to your debt service fund unless you have a special legislation. The sale proceeds for River Ridge also include the building. They remain there at a million dollars for the broker fees, next line offsetting that. And we want to recognize and acknowledge that there is still outstanding offsetting debt for River Ridge. These are numbers as of June 30, 2020. The moving costs then are also still assumed for best and the retrofit costs for best, similar to the previous slide. So here it shows that that total net sum is a negative 7,828,751. Again, we're not, we're not paying off that debt right away. We're continuing with our previously scheduled debt principal and interest payments. So if you take a look below and you exclude the debt from that equation, then that number is 3,165,000, of which 3,565,000 goes to the debt service fund. And we still have an outflow then from the general fund for the moving costs and retrofit costs for best. So this next slide now just kind of shows those two lines shown as a comparison. There, if you recall, the, the table in April 23rd had the other options listed, but we're focusing in on just the five and the 5A on this slide here. And the next slide does show the pros and cons related to, this is more for your purposes for conversation around Metcalf. And then we get into the tentative timeline, which I think I'll then pass this now back to Dr. Battle.
So going into next year, beginning in August, next school year, August 2020. So going into next year, beginning in August, next school year, um, August twenty twenty, we will begin the broker selection process. Um, have a more definite timeline and scope of work to be considered. Um, September through November is the selection of the broker, uh requests and vetting of proposals. January twenty twenty-one, we would have that board report and for action on the development developer proposals. And February through May, implementation of board action. Next slide. And with that, uh. For directors, um. For your conversation, the direction that we will need is about the broker process. Um, does the proposed process uh align with your expectations? The request for process uh components for the request for proposals. Um, and our recommendations and then discussing Metcalf, the outlots or the entire property. And with that, I think the last slide is, thank you, oh, yep, so I'll turn it over to Abigail Alt, Chair Alt.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Um, can we just back up one slide just to keep, um, keep that up in front of us? Um, so starting with um a conversation around broker process. Versus the RFP or developer process, does anybody want to share initial thoughts, takeaways, concerns?
Can I ask a different question?
Absolutely.
Okay, so when mentioning um with nine seventeen and taking over the full building or leasing the full building. But they said that there was a delay and that it may. May. Probably not definitely be looked at until the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. What is the reason or cause for the delay? Cause it seemed like it was an urgent interest previously, and so just was wondering about an update on that.
The, I, I can attempt to answer that. The expansion of the programs is not, um. Going as quickly um as anticipated. They're trying to be very thoughtful in terms of um uh the placement of their programs. And basically, um. They rent most of their spaces, they own one building. But the rest are all uh member district spaces. So that's primarily it. Plus, I used to be the newest member on that board, I'm now the veteran. Um, we've had great turnover, so um. From the management, from the superintendent to um, to the members on the, on the board. So um, I, I think he needs to bring us along in terms of understanding the needs of that district. But they're doing a better job of um giving service to the districts and the students in the district. I hope that answers your question.
So I, I, in that same vein, I, I just want to clarify. What we had discussed before is, is now a question mark as to when and if.
Regarding Cedar?
Regarding, regarding Cedar, yes.
Yeah, so I think, I think she just, um, when I spoke with the business manager there at Intermediate nine seventeen, uh similar to what Diddy just described. It's really about, I mean, I'll be honest, COVID's kind of put a wrench in a lot of things and some of it has been like. Okay, things aren't moving quite as what we had expected, is it because of COVID that we're just not seeing it because it's not been face to face? Is it, is it um other things, do we just need to kind of give a little bit more time around this before we jump into a lease that? We're trying to justify and, and sell versus people just kind of coming to this on their own too and helping, uh making sure that. People are with them as they make their decisions, it's a little. And as you think about how you as a board act um as a whole with seven different members and, and they have how many different members, school districts. And so they're all, all those districts have their own unique situations with their own budgets too. And so we all come with, with our own perspective when nine seventeen comes with a proposal. So I think that's something that um they have to be more thoughtful about. And particularly with all the unknowns even for next fall. At this moment, I think it's just like, we gotta just kind of slow down the pace is what I'm hearing.
Thank you very much, that was really helpful.
Yeah, Chair Alt, if I might, um, yeah, I, I had, I appreciate, um. Leslie for that because I, I had the same question. Um, I, I think it's important that we note that, um. There was a lot of external, external pressures that are occurring, we understand that. And we're empathetic to their need to plan for the future and such. Um, but um, uh Lisa, I would just like to clarify, there is a cost. Uh, for us to, so, you know, so to speak, sit on this uh for a period of time, correct?
Well, at this point in time, as I think about it, half of the building is currently utilized by us. Okay, and so we share a custodian and part of that custodian's cost is covered by our. Common area maintenance costs that we receive from nine seventeen and that goes to the general fund to offset that expenditure. So let's say instead, we were, we were vacating our side of the building and turning it over to a less, someone leasing the building in whole. Um, we'd still find our cost existing for that portion of that custodian wherever we move them to, unless it's an existing building that already has a program. So as you heard previously, and I, help me out if I get this wrong, um Stephanie, but I think we had discussed, there were two um preferred options. For our BOSS program, one of which was um Marion W Savage and the other was um. I believe Metcalf, I believe Metcalf first floor. And so, you know, it depends, I mean, in both of those scenarios, we're talking about then the use of a, of a closed building. But we'd still have the need for custodial services for our program running in those locations, right? And so, um. We're actually, we, we, you might think of it as being, we're okay where we are. Or for this period of time, you know, um, we're not losing anything necessarily. Uh, we continue to receive the, the anticipated rentals that we had planned on and our budget didn't include anything more. Um, because it wasn't for twenty twenty-one. Um, so I think it, it, it's a matter of perspective.
Sure, I appreciate that, but at minimum, there is probably a missed opportunity, potential missed opportunity cost. I, I guess the only point I'd just like to make is, um, I, I think I would like to see it communicated to them that, um. That we appreciate again, uh, the circumstances and, um, but we will, of course, need at some point, uh, some, uh. Some decisiveness on this issue so we can move forward.
Understood.
Okay.
Darcy, I see your hand up.
Yep, I have a related, uh, I have a couple of questions, but I have a related question to this discussion, um, which is. More like what's the, if nine seventeen um doesn't move into that space. Doesn't want to move into the Cedar School until, well, maybe never, but at least for a couple of years now. What's the? What's the impact on the Metcalf space? And so if it's, we don't use it for a couple of years, you know, what sort of. Uh, I don't know, maintenance issues or whatever, what's, you know, I guess what's the issue or what's the concern? If we don't move into Metcalf for a couple of years. Hey, that's probably one question, and I'm not sure if we have the right people who could answer that.
Well, one, one thing, if I recall, I remember the recommendation was for BOSS to move to MW Savage and not Metcalf at all. So my question would be, what would be the use of MW Savage if that's not going to occur?
Well, I, I think there was two that, well, I think that we had two options of BOSS moving to either MW Savage or Metcalf. So sure, the question is, the question is the same of. If we don't move BOSS from Cedar School for a couple of years, what's the impact on those um underutilized, those unused buildings for that time?
So as we talked about, as we began even discussing this concept of closing schools um some years ago. There is this um offsetting, you know, pros and cons kind of thing that happens. Because you've got the, the challenge of, yes, you can save operating dollars by closing a school. And that's, that's where the savings are coming from, by not having an additional principal. Uh, in a middle school, for example, AP Dean, you know, down the route, down the line, right? And you saw that list of, of who we're talking about for those buildings. Um, so there's that savings and then you have the concern of, okay, you close a building, you're not utilizing it in some way. You have the risk of deterioration to that building that is somehow more costly potentially in some cases than not. So our challenge is, and it is a challenge, it's a challenge to make sure that those buildings are going to be maintained appropriately. It is why we have to maintain some of our custodial staff just to be able to check those buildings daily. They each have boilers, they all have to be monitored throughout the winter months, they have to make, we have to make sure that things are being monitored closely that way. Um, it is why we do not scale back on any of our security cameras in those buildings, we need to maintain, maintain that. They are going to be very well monitored. Um, we have also engaged our, through our property casualty liability insurance conversation. We told them upfront what was going on and um some companies will actually charge you a fee for the fact that you are putting a building into a dormant mode. And that is not the case for um AFM. And so um the affiliated FM is, is really good about, they actually give us many different um suggestions as to what we could, should do. They'll come on site and they will work with our operations director and, and really um have a hands-on view of what it is that they recommend. From a, a liability perspective, right, and what might go wrong with this particular piece of equipment. So I feel um really like we're in a good place as far as trying to use the resources we have. Not to say it's not going to be a challenge to make sure that these buildings don't deteriorate. But until we actually know exactly how we might utilize them. And I believe that there is, there is going to be something that can come out of whatever our community needs are as well as what it is that. Um, people find an interest in, it just needs to fit with the criteria the board determines as well, right? So if, if we have, we may have an interest, we could probably right now have those buildings used fully. But it might be with a competitor, you know what I mean? So it's like, yeah, it's just, it's just going to have to make sure that all the things align. And that it meets their expectations and criteria of the board as well.
Okay, super, that, that's um very helpful, Lisa, so that, that then is um. And a, a clear indication that something, we either pay to have the buildings dormant or we pay to have, or we, or redo something with them. Sell them, do whatever, and so, so that could, that leads me into my next, um. Kind of set of questions, so actually first, just to clarify that the. This, this uh slide that's up on the screen, it says next steps, board direction, are these, are these the only? These are the only questions that we're being asked to consider tonight? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yep, so, um. Going back to the April twenty-third conversation. Where we landed was the only open question, only open discussion was around Metcalf. With, and, and in addition, we need to figure out the process for selling off property. So with Metcalf, we're deciding, right, with Metcalf, we're deciding either to sell the entire plot, thirty-five acre plot or a ten acre outlot. We've decided to sell River Ridge and tonight we need to talk about which of the two processes are going to work best for us? The broker process or the RFP developer process?
Okay, so, well, at least, okay, so I'll address the first two then, so from my perspective, either the broker process or the RFP process component. I, that's six, one half dozen of the other, I think, kind of from my perspective. I think there, we would have qualified competent um people involved in both of them. Financial considerations come into play with it, but um, but from my perspective, I don't have any strong opinions of one. Process over the other there, I, I, I trusted our, the right people will be involved with the correct expertise and, um. And I don't have uh strong feelings one way or the other with those two. So, um, I guess my. It's, I guess we didn't really, I guess we talked about this before and it, it's kind of has just come up peripherally. Slide eleven in this presentation talks about Sioux Trail. But I don't see MW Savage anywhere in this, in this um presentation. And, and I only, and, and perhaps this, these are, you know, we're, we're going to be considered further down the road. But clearly the nine seventeen um change in plans perhaps pushes these to um consideration of these two properties a little bit. Further up the list than perhaps they would have been in the process, simply as, you know, as Lisa said, we. We, we won't, for sure, you don't have nine seventeen in there anytime soon, perhaps if other ever, it's really too, too much of an unknown at this point. So, um, I'm curious why MW Savage wasn't even mentioned in the, in the presentation? And then I guess where Sioux Trail and MW Savage will now appear in the priority um discussion of this process.
So, I'd like to comment and then I'll have uh Stephanie join in, so thank you for that, uh Director Shetts. Because uh I do believe we could have added the MW. So if you look back at the questions that Stephanie proposed. I think we're really being informed about the possible expansion of childcare based on COVID. Um, so let's go back to those questions, so as you know, both of them are going to be utilized this summer again for childcare. And the ended, we're getting indication that there's going to need to be a, an expansion based on the guidance today. And so I'll let Stephanie fill that in a little bit, but yes, we should note uh MW, what would be, since now we have a delay. With the, the lease, so I'll let Stephanie add some more context.
Um, I guess I would just like to um support kind of what the train of thought is there is that both Sioux Trail and MW Savage. Um, are ironically, you know, resources that we really may um need. And um, we're doing distance learning, we're doing um, you know, most schools for students back. And that in-between um hybrid where we have some students in and some students out. Um, as we formulate the vision of what that looks like, we do anticipate that there would be um need for um more childcare. And so I know um Tom Umhofer and his team are, are developing those ideas and thoughts around um that potential. And um, that's, that's the work that we're going to be doing the next um week here or so is, is um determining some of those specific needs.
Okay, so essentially, slide eleven here could, should, probably had just had Sioux Trail and MW Savage with the same. You know, MW Savage could have just easily be listed on here as well.
Yeah.
Right, they have the same, same considerations, same questions, same possible usage, things like that, is that fair?
Okay, absolutely, the one, the other idea or path that, that could be created here. Um, you know, because we were thinking of um. Um, the alternative school going to MW Savage, um, we felt like um that was a really good um option for best. Um, in terms of just leveraging resources and being together um in a building to share some of that. And um, so now we've kind of backed off of that. But um, having said that, depending on what the board decides and if River Ridge would sell immediately, that would be another, um. You know, potential need we would, we would have is, where's the best place for? Um, for our best program and depending on what else is in those buildings, you know, moving forward and not to get into weeds too much. But um, our DEC building is a, a strong contender for our best program to move in. Um, however, um, if hybrid requires that we're using more space within DEC, that might um take us down another path as well. So we're still developing all those options, um, and they are, um. You know, just um very fresh with what, sure, um, what the needs are.
Yep, absolutely, and I can certainly anticipate even, you know, as during the course of the year, you know, what we start out with. Of as, as recommendations from MBE might not be what we end of the year at with MBE. You know, it's entirely possible that um the shift might, it might change, you know, during the year as well. So, so that's, that's, um, that's completely fair, so I guess then my only. So, so that's, that's, um, that's completely fair, so I guess then my only um. We'll have to just make sure that MW Savage and Sue Trail just kind of stay in the mix, you know. Um, as, let's just say we start the, you know, we, we start the school year with some sort of hybrid. You know, model online, you know, but by January, everybody, all the kids are back in school, you know, whatever. Let, let's be super optimistic and the virus is gone, disappeared into the ether. And so, so then um, Sue Trail and MW Savage then would still have to take on new priorities. Um, in this list of, this kind of in this list of priorities because of the nine seventeen then change. So um, I guess I don't want to just, you know, and I got to forget about them, of course, that's not happening or anything. But there's been very little discussion about, you know, these two, these two properties and I just want to make sure we keep that kind of um, top of mind. Once we're able to um, think about full utilization of our, our um, full and normal utilization of our buildings again.
Yeah, thank you for that. The um, the other thought that I had um, is an example they gave us today. Um, as we develop these plan, plans, we think about it as a district. Um, but what might happen is, is that we have an individual building um, that has different needs than the other elementary buildings. And so again, ironically, these might um, turn out to be um, resources that we, we really need to support our, our students and families moving forward.
Excellent, thank you, and I'm, yeah, not at all, you know, pressing for final answers now, it's just, I, I was, I was confused by some of the omissions here. And kind of like how those played into um, what the plans were, so thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Any other comments or questions about?
Um, yeah, one, one more, so on slide six, we're goes over what um, we had instructed at the. Um, April twenty-third board meeting, um, it says, um, the last bullet is sell outlots at Diamond Head and Metcalf for redevelopment. And then on um, slide nineteen and the other financial slide, it doesn't show any revenue from any sale of an outlot on Diamond Head. It just says Diamond Head is, is zero. And so I was wondering if we were including Diamond Head Outlot as a, a conversation? Or are we still thinking of that and, and then what would be some of the financial um, revenue? Based off of an outlot sale at Diamond Head um, in this, in these financial equations? And then in addition on nineteen, um, slide nineteen, it says the sale proceeds of Metcalf. Because we would be able to use that and available for general fund, wouldn't um, a scenario at the bottom? Be that the impact on the general fund is really a po- a positive six hundred thousand dollars? Because we'd be able to pull the million from the sale of um, the outlot at Metcalf. As revenue versus, and not have, and of course then that would draw down what the impact on the debt service fund would be. But we wouldn't necessarily see a negative four hundred thousand dollars if we move that proceed of a million to the general fund.
Okay, um, thank you, I see your point there, um, the. The, the asterisk is not reflected in the bottom of slide nineteen where this says one point nine four, that is true. Um, it's, it's um, it's going to be up to the board if they, if they choose to do that. They have the ability to do so with the sale proceeds, um, because it is just land alone. And Diamond Head is not included in option five as it was listed on April twenty-third. Because it was after the presentation that the board considered a combination of what I believe was option two and some form of five. And so I see your point, you make good points there about, um, if we were to do a holistic of everything that you had discussed. After the last April meeting, this um, could have included an, a, a hybrid of option two and five. And option two and five A on the twenty-one slide. This number down here um, is currently showing the million dollars for the sale of Metcalf is debt service. And to your point, it really probably should show it with only nine hundred and forty as debt service. Assuming the million dollars would be set aside or set against the general fund, four hundred thousand dollar out, outflow. Um, resulting in a six hundred thousand dollar increase, yep, I hear you and you are accurate on that. Um, that's an error in that segment of that slide, thank you.
So maybe um, one request.
Yes.
That the information be updated to reflect the final consensus at the end of the discussion on April twenty-third.
Uh, do you mean that we would show a sale proceeds, I don't know that we had a, a decision on the number of acres? We just knew it was some.
And the decision was, um, we were interested in understanding basically keeping Diamond Head and selling the outlots.
Right.
And to Leslie's point, the outlots were not included, so we need to see information for the sale of Diamond Head Outlots. Metcalf is a, is a different conversation that we, we have, have still to have.
Right, um, is it two acres then that you want me to utilize for the discussion point on Diamond Head Outlots?
Was it a two, two separate parcels of two acres each, or was it?
Two, two parcels, yep, if you go back to the original presentation, it's there, Lisa.
Uh, we had two different parcels identified on the Diamond Head location, but they only discussed a dollar amount related to two acres. Do you want the slide revised to reflect the sale proceeds of two acres or four acres?
Well, we had landed on two outlots being sold, so if two outlots represents four acres, then that's what we want to understand.
Two outlots of Diamond Head?
Yes.
Okay, I did not understand that, but I will make the revision to slide nine.
I mean, that was, I, correct me if my.
That's correct, yep.
Okay, okay.
So a total of four acres of Diamond Head Outlots. Um, included on the option five hybrid. And do you want the same addressed on five A?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Um, I had a question, um, and I think I know the answer, but um, in terms of um. The difference between uh, a broker option and the RFP developer option. There is additional expense with. With the second one, with the, our, RFP developer, because we would need to engage Ellers to be the consultant to assist with that process. Whereas with the broker, we only have brokers fees. Am I, correct me where I'm wrong?
So the, may I?
Yep.
Definitely, okay, so the um, the intention of the brokerage service is for a real estate transaction. So if, if in any case you're going to do a real estate transaction, we're not talking about redevelopment, a broker can manage that. When you begin to talk about redevelopment, a broker can no longer manage that. And instead, we do need the expertise of an organization such as Ellers to facilitate that process. And the inclusion of the work with um, with the city.
Does that help? The project, the project defines who we need to engage.
Do you also need an estimate of those services, because that could be in the updated slide two?
That might be helpful, yeah.
That was one of my questions, is what's the cost of one or the other?
Right, so with a broker, they're going to give you a percentage of the proceeds. And so like, if you think about if you sell a home, oftentimes there is a, a certain percentage that, that, there's a commission, right? So similarly, when you're selling commercial property, the broker's going to have a set fee that they receive. And that's reflected with the sixty thousand as to what they, was their best guess as to what broker fees may look like on a one, one million dollars, okay? So when we select a broker, that's one of the key things you're going to want to be looking at for criteria, is what is it that they're asking for? When you're talking about the services for um, redevelopment. And you're utilizing others, then we're talking about how many hours of involvement is it that it's going to take with them? To be honest, I think we um, I was surprised by the number of hours that were put into our project just in the month of April. And they have revised that invoice to us. And all of May was written off with a zero dollar of us owing because they had exceeded the cap already um, in the month of April. So um, we need to be really um, as, as particular as we can be about what it is. Because as you recall, when we start, first started talking about this, we, we didn't necessarily have a whole lot of thought about Metcalf necessarily being. Part of our, our, our big discussion, it was more Diamond Head. So it, it depends on the scope and I can certainly reach out to them and ask them for a proposal for that. I think is, as defined as we can be in what it is we want them to do for us. Uh, the better that, that amount is going to come, you know, in closer to what they can actually deliver. Um, in the, in the RF, in the redevelopment processes.
So just to clarify, basically what we're talking about is River Ridge with, with the sale of River Ridge. Would um, be handled by a broker. Outlet, outlots at Eve, at Diamond Head or Metcalf, or the entire sale of Metcalf is an RFP developer process involving others.
I would want to seek further expertise around whether or not a sale of land at Metcalf could just be. A real estate transaction, I don't know. I haven't had enough input from the city of Eagan to know and understand that. I think we've heard enough from the city of Burnsville that they already have a clear plan of what they want to see happen for the area of Diamond Head. And so anything about Diamond Head, I think would have to be involving a redevelopment process.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I guess in terms of giving guidance, unless, let me just check in, are there any other questions about what we've seen in the slides so far? Okay, um, so I think probably where we need to go next is really talking about Metcalf. Um, and um, really kind of diving into as best we can. What do we think is going to serve our purposes best and our students' purposes, students' needs? Um, the sale of an outlot? Or entire sale of the property itself? And, and there's a caveat that we, we still have more costs to understand that Dr. Battle will be, will be bringing back coming out of this conversation.
One thought that I have, oh, Dar- Darcy, go ahead. Lower my hand quick before I forget, okay, I, I'm still on the uh, ten acre. Um, team from our last discussion to retain the majority of the property and sell off the ten acres for redevelopment. Okay, there might not be a ten acre team, but anyway, that's where I.
Can I ask why?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, what's the reason, we'd want to keep the building?
Uh, because, well, I think um. Because there is, well, I guess now even more, more uncertainty with it, I don't, you know, I didn't see, I didn't see a lot of compelling. Um, reasons to sell off the entire thing um, for this, the single home redevelopment. Um, I didn't get, uh, didn't sound like there was huge enthusiasm from Egan, you know, for the space, the site. Um, I mean, I'm sure it's, I'm sure it is, I mean, I live in that neighborhood, um, or this neighborhood. And so um, I didn't get the impression there is a huge amount of enthusiasm for that space. And I have faith that we will need another uh, uh, middle school. Um, before we're going to want to build another middle school. Well, Leslie, go ahead.
Yeah, I would say I'm part of team ten, ten acres. Some for the same reasons that Darcy had noted, um, the other in looking at the, the offsetting debt from a sale of the whole building. Versus the sale of just a parcel, um, I still think we'll be at a loss in selling the whole building. You know, the whole property in itself, and I don't know if there's actually a true financial benefit to doing that. As much as the financial benefit of just a, a part, you know, a parcel. So, and then again, also being on this side of the, the district. If, you know, when there is growth or needing to have a, a third middle school, just being able to have that service component. On this side so that our, this neighboring students here aren't necessarily traveling so far to go to a middle school. It's nice to have one closer in your neighborhood.
Yeah, I.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, wait, I'm sorry, Scott had, had his hand up, you'll be next.
Okay, very great, again, I have my hand up. Um, yeah, I, I'm not prepared to declare myself for a team at the moment, but I do have a couple of questions about Metcalf. So other than the obvious, one of the slides said that work would need to be done to prepare Metcalf for a possible sale. Other than the obvious, like moving furniture out and things like that, like what, what kind of things would need to be done? To prepare Metcalf for a possible sale and is there a ballpark of what that would cost?
So if I might, um, I think the intent behind the phrasing was really around the need for us to work with the city of Eagan. As they don't have it declared in their twenty forty plan currently for anything other than what it is right now. So we would need to figure out what it is that their vision is for that zoning. And that's the work that needs to happen so that those who are, might be interested in redevelopment can understand what's going to be accepted and what's not going to be accepted.
Okay, thank, thank you, and I have one other question. Um, is there a, we've already touched on this a little bit tonight, but the ongoing maintenance costs that we're going to have. If we keep the building vacant for the next, I don't know, five years or ten years, like what's that going to look like? And what might it cost if we decide to reopen the school five or ten years from now? I'm guessing it would take some investment to get the building ready to be a school again, if it's vacant for a number of years. Even if we are maintaining it in the intervening years.
Yeah, I think um. I think if we're successful in being able to keep the, that building sealed and, and not necessarily have any breaches through security. And that um, we are able to maintain the boilers and other equipment on a periodic basis. They're all on, on what we call periodic maintenance schedules. Um, it is a necessity that we maintain a custodian that is going to basically loop around for those three schools. They make sure that everything is working well on them and have that focus as their, their responsibilities. That's, that we knew and that's why you saw um, a reduction of five custodians when we have more than five currently previously housed at those buildings, right? So we know that and understand that, um, there was, I think, when we looked at the review of the five-year, ten-year plan, excuse me. I believe we had around two million dollars, almost two million dollars across, you know, for Diamond Head and for Metcalf. And, and so um, those, remember, are only based upon, as soon as a, a, a building's roof. No longer has a warranty, it's placed on our ten-year plan. But each year, we're inspecting those, those roofs to make sure that if they are not needing it, then they move out um, on the schedule. And yet if um, there, if all of a sudden we have leakage and we have to take care of some things, we'll, we'll do the repairs. But if it becomes to a point where it's like, you know, we need to move this one up, we'll do that too, we haven't had to fortunately. But that's, that's kind of something that we're just going to really need to watch carefully and, and those three buildings will be in a loop with the rest of it. Um, they are our assets, they're being insured fully as our assets. And um, we want to make sure that we maintain that as well. Um, it's not easy for me to say right now what that crystal ball is for each of those buildings, it's hard to say what, what might come up. Um, keep in mind, we also have on Sue Trail. And um, MW, we have solar panels as well. And so um, you know, the, the bit of energy that we are going to be using will still benefit from the fact that those solar arrays are going to offset those utility costs as well. So um, we want to, we just want to maintain things as they are and work to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Eric, you were gonna share your thoughts?
Yeah, I, I. Yeah, I really believe that, well, let's start. You know, I think we need to take a philosophical assessment of what our roles are here today. We obviously serve four-year terms. We have a requirement to a period of time after. So, you know, obviously we're setting up things for the future for the district, but that has to cease at some point. You know, we could speculate that with continual development that, that at some point in the future, a building like that might be necessary for this district. But I think there has to be a cutoff where our responsibility for that ends and we need to be more cognizant of the more media. And by that, I mean, I firmly believe that we're not going to need this building for at least 15 to 20 years. I think anything short of that is highly optimistic. We have been in a negative enrollment model for, I believe, pushing 10 years. And looking at the class size information that we received in recent reports, our smallest classes are at the low end of our, you know, on the second, third, fourth kindergarten, et cetera, first grade levels. So there's no trending to demonstrate that we're going to be growing in classroom size. So we would actually have to go back to zero and then go on to the positive side for a period of time before we would even need to utilize a third middle school building. We're not a three middle school district anymore. We just simply are not. We have room and capacity on the grounds at both Nicollet and Eagle Ridge to expand if that became necessary. I believe we could probably, you know, even if something dramatically changed in the next five to six years, we could even allow capacity, you know, without even construction projects to grow into those buildings. So that means we're going to be sitting on a building that I appreciate Lisa's effort to calculate there are costs involved. There are also liability costs involved. Empty, large, empty buildings like that, you know, draw attention, both from human attention and natural intention. There's all kinds of issues that we might have to deal with that may or may not be foreseeable. I struggle with understanding why we need to hold on to that building when, you know, there's an opportunity to divest ourselves from it and free up the space. That's my take on it.
Thank you, Eric. DeeDee, you have thoughts?
Just here? Yeah, I'm here. I'm a little bit on Eric's camp. I, I don't see a need for that building in the near future, or even as Eric mentioned, 12 to 15 years. And, and I'm somewhat still stuck on Cedar. And I need to say this before I that the fact, I don't want folks to think I'm hung up on 917. If we need to leave Cedar, if Burnsville Alternative High School needs to stay there, let's, because two years down the road, who knows what's, what our world is going to be like? And, and we don't have to lease it to Cedar. Their lease will be up. We can just lease that space to them. I've been ruminating about that. So I need to say that we can just say that's our alternative high school and we can leave them there. We don't know what the future is going to hold after this pandemic, anyway. Back to Metcalf, I'm a little bit in Eric's corner. I say, I worry about getting rid of the extra land there that then it's not as nice a property. I just think we need to get, sell the whole property as a whole property. So that's my two cents right now.
Thank you, DeeDee. So I'll go last. I think Eric hit the nail on the head in terms of visioning 15 years out, understanding what the short term and the long term is for our needs. And I was trying to pull up the information, maybe Lisa, you have it on hand. There are operating costs just to keep the building, an empty building heated beyond the LTFM expenditures. And with any building that we choose to sell, I think it's obvious to all of us that there's debt associated with it. So, you know, for me, that kind of evens the playing field. That we are basically looking at shrinking our footprint and trying to make sure that, you know, we're cutting unnecessary expenditures. And I think in terms of the amount of time, even thinking optimistically about improved enrollment, it's not, it's, you know, we aren't a three middle school district. And the opportunity, I mean, if you think about the other two middle schools, when we get to a point where we need to expand, where we have to create more space for our students, if you think in terms of what we were able to accomplish at the high school with that addition, we could really do some creative and forward-thinking development in terms of learning for our students at our middle schools. One, you know, one of them. And I fully believe that probably will be another board's decision. But to keep an empty building, I am concerned about the operational costs because every year we're going to, we will see that, you know, that drawdown simply because we're keeping another building empty. We don't know what COVID is going to bring. And I'm nervous about, you know, even MW and Sioux Trail and how we're going to, you know, I have to be hopeful. But I really think we need to look ahead to what does, what does selling Metcalf mean in terms of what our district might be able to do for our students down the road? Rather than sending them back to an old building. And I appreciate that, Leslie, I completely empathize with, you know, concerns about, you know, families losing that middle school in their neighborhood. But that's kind of where we are. So I think, I know Teresa and Lisa and Stephanie, you are all hoping to get guidance from us. I think we do, what I'm hearing and board members tell me if I'm mistaken, but I'm hearing that we need a little more information on the finances. We need probably a succinct set of slides that details each of the properties, purpose and the financials for the ones that we, for Metcalf specifically. Because up until now, we've, you know, we believe that the alternative high school will be going to MW and that Sioux Trail will continue to be considered for childcare. We need to understand what costs we're talking about in terms of Lers involvement. Specifically, you know, and Lisa, I know you probably have already noted this, but getting information about, you know, is the sale of an outlaw at Metcalf different from, is that process different from selling off the entire 35 acres? And what that, what that, what the impact is financially? Board members, do you?
I think another thing that would be helpful for me, especially looking at like slide 21, is like we are thinking we'll get 2.6 million for the 35 acres of Metcalf, but we owe over $8 million. It's, I feel like we have a kind of a poor loan, you know, like we bought something that really wasn't worth its value. And so I'm, I think it's that financial implication that has been holding me back from thinking that's the best financial solution for, for this option. You know, we're selling off a parcel. I think we make a better financial benefit, even though we would end up snowballing and still have to, you know, pay at least keeping the buildings, you know, warmer or whatever to not cause any damage. But I don't know, I think the idea of having a $6 million loss on a sale is, I think, is kind of what kind of continues to hold me back. And so I kind of want to understand more about, is it really that we're only going to get 2.6 million for 35 acres? Or what does, how does, how does all those numbers play out?
Just to clarify, Leslie, I sort of have a similar question. If I understand what you're saying is you're worried that we have a balloon payment, so to speak, of $6 million, right? Okay, that's fair. I agree. I want to, I want to understand that also.
And I think also, just to, since we're talking about options, we also need to understand, and we can certainly talk about this between now and August, Teresa, but understanding the logistics of a legislative option, the timing, you know, if, if we're talking about multiple plots of land, if we want to get a legislative option, what steps need to be taken and in what timeframe? And then also, I know I've been wondering about taking the proceeds of the land sale and committing them for requiring that those proceeds be used to build, to fund the addition at one of the two middle schools. So then we wouldn't be unduly burdening taxpayers so many years in advance. And I think that's, depending on the answer to Leslie's question, that committing of funds for future use might be something to consider. Anybody else? All right.
So, so appreciate that clarification. And then I wanted to ask Lisa if she needed some questions, clarification. Because based on the financial information, we may have to engage Lers in another contract small to run all the numbers. I wanted Lisa's perspective on that and if she has any more questions. Or Stephanie?
If I may, I have a wondering just around the broker's process that was defined as to its similar construction management process used. Is that something that still needs work or is it accepted as a starting point for us to move that forward? Or is there any guidance about that timeline at this time? Go ahead.
So in terms of specifically the sale of River Ridge, which I think is the one thing that we're all still, we're all on the same page with the broker option to have a committee including two board members and staff to vet applicants. And then if that, if that's something we are interested in, what do we want to come out of that committee? Do we want a single recommendation? Do we want two presentations to the full board?
I think if we're going to have a committee, we should trust them to do as much of the work as possible and come to the board with, you know, at most two recommendations that we would consider. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yep, I agree that I, me being on the committee would not be able to come. That's just not my level of expertise. There is a representative in the board. And so trusting the committee to do the work they're charged with is most effective.
So committee does the work. We trust the committee and they come forward with preferably one, if we need to, two recommendations?
That would be, that would be my preference.
I see heads nodding. Okay, so preferably one. If needed to.
Thank you. As far as as far as the redevelopment, I understand that I need to revise the slides, financial slides particularly, so that they reflect a combination of what had been option two and option five with option two including outlots of Diamond Head up to four acres. And so given that, I would take a run at it myself, given the information we have and ask for, you know, review of that by Lers. And at the same time, probably, I mean, I know their hourly rate and they basically apply that. They, they just worked with us on a scope of work previously so that there was kind of a not to exceed amount previously. So we can certainly engage them now with a set hour amount per hour that they charge us, like any attorney, for example. However, I would be, I think it would be in the district's best interest to attempt to identify what is the scope of these projects as we move forward. Maybe that can come a little later with some further guidance from the board after I get some of these financial numbers kind of clarified for you. The challenge I think we're going to run into is, I believe it would be a separate project to deal with Metcalf Middle School. And that whole scope of what that looks like involving the city of Eagan, I think, is a little bit just unknown at this point. Just because we just don't know. So we may need to be somewhat more flexible with regard to that project. But I think that likely if the board is comfortable with just us working solely with others, we could certainly approach them and and ask for a scope of work with regard to, with regard to the outlots of, well, with regard to the five and two combo, which doesn't include the building, right? Assuming, that would be assuming that the city of Eagan would not be changing necessarily their thought process of zoning except for single family homes, right? But if you were to sell the full property of Metcalf Middle School, then we might need and find ourselves getting far deeper into the details with the city of Eagan regarding what possibilities there could be. Because they just haven't, they don't have it included in their 2040 at this time.
And Lisa, that was actually one of my, another one of my questions that, you know, in a similar way that we have the city of Burnsville involved.
Yeah.
Obviously, we need to, we would need to have the city of Eagan involved as well.
I mean, the city of Eagan has its locations that they're working on. This just isn't one of them at this point in time. So we would need to ask them to focus on that for those needs.
Teresa and Lisa and Stephanie, do you have what you, what you need in terms of what we're looking for? And
I do.
Talk about
I do. How about Stephanie?
I do.
Okay, great. So I think we can move to the next topic. Thank you all very much. We'll look forward to coming back to this.
So thanks, Stephanie and Lisa.
Yes, thank you.
Returning to FY21 Superintendent. Returning to FY twenty-one superintendent goals, and I'll just hand it over to you, Teresa.
Okay, thank you. So Brian Gersich and Amina, they can also leave for this portion. So I'm gonna go over the draft of goals and standards for my evaluation. Excuse me, I have a tickle in my throat. So just give me a moment, please. Okay, sorry about that. Um, so reflected in my draft goals for next school year twenty 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 twenty-one. Review the board feedback from last week. Limited the goals. And so the first section, our district focus goals, goal one includes the subset of the SMART goals. So I would align to the board goals. Goal two and goal, goal three actually reference the Minnesota School Boards Association Evaluation Process processes. So goal two is really about the strategic plan, the roadmap that we are going to refine and develop going forward. And goal three relates to the budget process. And then lastly, at the last meeting, we board members gave feedback about strengthening my relationship with school staff, both formal and informal leaders. And so goal four makes reference to the areas of ethical and inclusive leadership, as well as cultural competency to address those areas. And then I believe the timeline is for us to come back in August after some discussion here. And then I presented another draft in August. So that's one of the questions I do have.
All right. So we've all had a chance to look these over and I'll open it up for comments, questions.
Okay, I have a couple of a couple of questions, or probably just some clarifications under goal one. Goal one, section A, evidence of performance. The last item says superintendent sends a personal invitation to candidates. I think that's actually referring to the item B. If I'm not mistaken. Because the goal one is just about the the prospective document, but it's not about candidates. Right? Yeah, I think it just needs a little to the to item. Yeah. To that performance, yeah, for item B. Did we, okay, do we keep going? Yes. All right. Yeah. All right.
Is each person, you know, we'll go through and have each person make comments, questions, round robin.
Super. Okay. So then the only other, yeah, the two and goal two and three, I didn't have any I didn't have any comments on or questions. Goal four. You know, the goal itself, yeah, it sounds, looks, looks great. I have no, no questions about that itself. I guess the I had sort of okay, sort of the same question on every, on all of the evidence of performance items under goal four, where where I wasn't entirely sure about what the specifics of these items were. So just so like the first one about whole monthly meetings with different school staff, I'm not, wasn't entirely sure about who that was and what purpose, what the purpose would be and kind of how that information, like what was, what the purpose and who those people were and kind of what the purpose of those meetings were. It, and so that I said sort of the same question about all of the but all of the items here, like just, they seem a little, they seem a little broad to be to be or unspecific maybe is the, is the better word. And so just, you know, taking that for for what it's worth, the the one item that I, that seemed out of place and here was the meet quarterly with leaders of the twelve bargaining units. Is that an HR director function? Or what was the thought behind that one?
So the purpose and the who and what was the purpose was somewhat related to yours and Chair Alt's request to have more contact with school staff. And so I guess I need more information about the expectation. Because right now I have school visits tried twice a week. And I do have opportunities to meet with sometimes the entire staff, sometimes groups. And then also the twelve bargaining units. I think with the distance learning, that became more evident with all of the questions to just make outreach. So those were actually related to the requests from you. So I guess I need more information about what that expectation was.
Yeah, I guess I, so, yeah, it's right. And I made, I made the comments, you know, during the during the last workshop about this, about, you know, school connectivity, things like that. And I didn't envision the bargaining units to be, to be part of that. I guess that, you know, again, that seems, at least the way that it's written, it seems like it's an HR function as opposed to a superintendent. You have lots of, you know, lots of things to do. And I didn't see the bargaining units as part of that, you know, school connectivity piece of it. So I think it is, I guess for, so then for the, for the for the rest of these is overall, my, I guess what I was thinking was that these are, these are great goals. I just want to understand more about who, like, who you're meeting with and why, just like more specificity, I guess, about about what these were, you know, because meeting with different school staff, formal and informal leadership representation. I don't, I have, I have no idea, like, who you're envisioning with that, with that one. Is it? Is it teachers? Is it principals? Is it custodians? I mean, like, I really have no idea. And so so just more specificity about what your vision was with some of these. I think they're all great, you know, and certainly connect with, you know, connect with the with the schools themselves. And I guess my, like, my general vision of the, the being in the schools was a, I don't know, you know, I just, I guess, informal time in the schools, observing how, observing what's happening, being able to talk informally with the teachers of, you know, some of the challenges that they have, maybe, you know, and and certainly having the principal, you know, they're certainly not suggesting that there's any, you know, bypassive leadership there. But, you know, really so that, so that as you spend time in, so when, so here's, okay, so here's, I guess, the the vision I had, because this is what I did when I was first elected to the board in the period of time between election and when I took office. I spent two weeks, I think it was two weeks, maybe two and a half weeks, I visited every single school in the district, including the community add and pre-K programs, things like that. And what I saw from just those tours was I could tell from schools to school in the elementary where I was seeing the same themes and the same challenges and where the culture of the school seemed very different in some cases from the cultures of the other schools. And I got a really great feeling for how those how those schools operated just as a whole, like, I could see the, I could see the continuity amongst the elementary schools, and I could see where there was disconnect with the leaders, the leadership of those schools and which leaders really felt to me, even though they didn't say it, like, felt they were struggling for some, for some reason. And so and the same thing happened in the middle schools. I could see where the threads of continuity were, and I could see where there were struggles. And then the high school courses, you know, it's an animal unto itself, certainly. But the same sort of thing where just spending time in the schools, just walking around, seeing what's happening, getting a feel for the atmosphere and the, and the, and things, and the teachers and students and things like that. That will, that will give you such a great, like, overall picture of of how things are and how things are going, you know, and what, where you, where you're going to feel some disconnects and where you're going to see the continuity. And and so that's why I guess what I mean about getting to know the culture and the atmosphere of the schools. It's not, it's great that, you know, you're doing the events and stuff like that. That's absolutely a part of, a part of the, of the position. But it's that, you know, if I, you know, if a board member came to you and said, I'm hearing something, you know, a little rumbling about Gideon Pond for that you would be able to say, all right, I know Gideon Pond. I know, I know what the teachers are like there. I kind of know what their challenges are. I know what their successes are. And and you would be able to then lead whatever needed to, to happen, you know, in in that direction. So that's, I guess, what I was thinking when I was saying that getting to know the schools, you know, to really see that, that kind of continuity. But overall, you know, I I think the the goals that you have here are are great for goal four, or the evidences of performance items. Okay, that's all I have. Do you have any questions, Teresa? Does that make sense?
Yes, I think it's similar to what led us to have the proposal about implementing the middle school model was from the visits that I did across the three middle schools. Brian and I spent a day at one of them, just unannounced. So I make unannounced visits. So it's in the events, but also just showing up. So, yes. And and several visits to the high school. I don't think I've been to every area yet. I think I've been to sections, but it's pretty large. So yes, I do understand.
Okay, great. All right. Chair Alt, I am done.
Thank you. Any other comments or any questions on what Teresa has pulled together, DeeDee?
Yes, I, I actually like the fact that you're meeting with the bargaining units. Not to necessarily disagree with Darcy, but I, I think you get a perspective of of their leadership and and it gives them an opportunity to express to you, which is different than expressing to HR or bargaining or that kind of thing. But it, it also, I, I think that's good. And the superintendent has to have the broad picture of the district, not just instruction, not just schools. But you have to know what's going on in the tech department. You have to know what's going on in the custodial department. And it's not just school custodians. Custodians drive the vehicles around the district. They do other kinds of activities. So but perhaps maybe wording that differently might, might, but I, I think that's great. Meeting with the bargaining units. Then they feel comfortable being able to say things to you that they wouldn't say to maybe others, I mean, other people in leadership. Anyway. But I like this. This is really, really good. The one question that I have is the MSBA goals and standards, you put in the actual standard and and the highly effective, effective. Was there a reason that that was in there? I mean, that you put that in there? The standard one, governance team. And I'm just curious.
Oh, so it's because of the element, the broad category is governance team and the strategic plan, the finances are elements of that governance.
Got it.
It's the way that MSBA structures.
Okay, thank you.
Have standards and then elements.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Sat, you've had your hand up?
Yes, DeeDee took one of my comments, because I was gonna say the same thing about the bargaining unit. I think it's important to always be working on building and developing those relationships, even when it's not negotiation times. So I think it's really good to have those relationships and to have conversations outside of the context of negotiating goals two and I think four. You had several mentions of surveys. And while I like surveys as much as anybody, I do wanna caution against the possibility of survey fatigue. If we send out too many surveys to the same groups of people, sometimes we have diminishing, in my experience in my day job, you have diminishing returns. And and so just being cognizant, cognizant of that and being careful that we're not sending out too many surveys to the same people in too close of succession runs the risk of watering down the results and maybe not getting the results you want. So just some, I wanted to throw out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, your hand is up.
Yeah, thank you. I I wanted to go back to the question DeeDee had about the, the specific listing of the MSBA standards and elements. So I was just coming back to see if I could find, and I can't life of me find the original MSBA document. But this time around, we had twenty-five elements in that. So the, so the evaluation was essentially two sections. It was the super and doctor battle, superintendent's personal and district-related goals. And then there was the MSBA word-for-word elements, which, just to be clear, elements are pieces of standards. I think there's eight standards and there's numerous amounts of elements under each standard. We selectively chose to cut that down to twenty-five. So if you guys thought that was a lot, you should, we should see what it would have been to evaluate just using the MSB doc, MSBA document. If I, Dr. Battle, I'm trying to understand if I'm reading what you've submitted here correctly. You're down to four now. So is that what you're saying? Or and if so, I think as a board, we need to have a conversation about that. If that's what we tend to do. So first, my first question, is that, is that what you're saying here is the MSBA section would go from twenty-five elements to four elements?
Yes. So I guess clarification from the last discussion was to limit the number. And and also to look at the upcoming work. And so, yes, that was going to four. So I took a look at all the elements. I, I think one reason we had so many is because of the work before us this year. So we had the levy. So I had a lot more financial elements. So the levy, the budget, if you look at the eight, there was so much we did this year. It was completely aligned.
Well, I would, I would, no, I'm not sure I entirely agree. The, the MSBA standards and elements are universal for for superintendents. And so in theory, every one of them would somehow apply. And I know, I know that some of our evaluations comments were, well, this doesn't, this is really an HR role or whatever. We didn't pre-talk about that. And maybe now is the time to do that as a board. The reason the MSBA puts that in a superintendent's job functions is the buck stops there, you know. And so, yes, they they have an HR person or a business director or whatever that's taking care of that piece of the business. But they still, I think the MSBA's perspective But they still, I think the MSBA's perspective is the superintendent should be evaluated on the performance because they hire and control that person. So regardless, we can continue to have that conversation in a minute. But, but the MSBA's total standard and elements cover the entirety of the, of any superintendent, whether it's a superintendent, you know, in Minneapolis or a superintendent somewhere outstate or whatever. The goal of that document is to cover the entirety scope of it. So we, we selectively made a decision, and most of those cuts I made were, hey, we've got two or three elements that's very similar in, in essence, I'm gonna take, you know, in the effort to try to get rid of some of the excessiveness of it, I cut some of them out. But I would just caution two things we need to think about. One, we're, if we, if we try to make significant changes, and I'm not necessarily debating, arguing that we need to keep what we had, but if we make significant changes, it's gonna be a little hard to make apples to apples comparisons in year over year performance. And two, Dr. Battle, God forbid, you should wish to move on to another district at some point in your career. This is the standard that most districts would look at and evaluate, more so probably than personal goal achievement. The MSBA standards and elements is sort of the accepted language throughout the, throughout the state. So I would, I would just suggest that it might be in your personal interest to want to have a few more of those in there, just, you know, demonstrate against those. Because again, those are, those are universal terms that most people should understand when referring to superintendent evaluation. So, so I throw it out there. I know people thought that section was extensive. I'm open to a conversation.
So board members, Dr. Battle, comments on Eric's question?
Well, goals are different than, you know, generally goals, you focus on a, a, a few. The evaluation covers the, the whole range. So I'm comfortable with four goals. And then the evaluation covers the, the whole, the whole range. So I'm comfortable with a focus on a, a specific. And then in the evaluation, we know there's more to be covered. That's, that's my spin on it.
That wasn't my takeaway, so let's just make sure we're clear on that. But the document that's sent out to the board members next year would still have all those elements on it.
Right, right, right.
Okay, I wasn't taking that away from this document. I was assuming they would only have these four elements on it.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Right, right. What she's, the focus this year is on these four. The evaluation will have what, what it had this year. Am I interpreting this correctly?
No, I agree with you, DeeDee. I think that's where my head went too. You know, like you, you get, you get rated on your standard performance based on the job description of what you were hired. But in order to really demonstrate other areas of growth or improvement, you're highlighting two or three areas or four that you're gonna focus or prioritize this year in addition to performing your general job performance. So you're evaluated actually on both these things. You're evaluated on, on demonstration of proof to the goals you set for yourself, along with the standards of which you're, you know, the job description of which you're hired. In addition, though, I just wanted to time, I too really like the idea of meeting quarterly with the 12 bargaining units as well. And especially as we're looking at addressing racism in our district and wanting to retain staff of color to be able to have these conversations with the bargaining units outside of contract negotiations to challenge that. I would appreciate that.
Thank you. So not to beat the dead horse, but to come back to this point, I, I would prefer then, if these are really more part of her, of Dr. Battle's personal goals, that they just be reincorporated, maybe they could be alluded to, reincorporated in language of your personal goals rather than, you, you know, in the format of the, because then it'll be really, I think, confusing for interpretation when we get to the evaluation form this next year. Because that's really should, like, like I did before, have the personal goals in one section, and then the MSBA goals all be, or, or objectives, or whatever you want to refer to them as in the second section laid out in their standardized format. That, does that make sense, Dr. Battle?
So I'm just reflecting a little bit on the MSBA directions from first, that first retreat with Superintendent Deb Hinton and then the most recent one. I recall them saying, you narrow it down. It's not the whole document. So I have to go back and reflect. And when I look at the other superintendent's evaluation, it's only the three to five goals. So I think I wanna, I'm not sure if we need some more guidance from MSBA.
I'm, I'm not, you're, you're probably reading the summary, but I've only been involved in one other superintendent's evaluation, and that was Doc, or Joe's. And that had way too many of those elements. It was a massive document that we had to sort through. And that's, that was the impetus for trying to slim down to at least 25. So, yeah, so, but, but that might not have bled through into the final report. Because like I did, I just, there was just a paragraph that said of 25 elements, Dr. Battle scored X. You know, I didn't even get into the details on those. But, so I just think we need to be clear about that going into this. Whoever's gonna be setting up the evaluation next year, what's gonna be on the form?
And Eric, I think in terms of our, our standard practice with superintendent evaluations, the evaluation tool itself is lengthy. It's always been lengthy. And it's, it's been kind of a beast of a project for the vice chair to pull all the data together. So that at least is, is part of the history. So maybe Teresa, since you wanna reflect on that, maybe, you know, that's something we all think about heading into August. Is that fair? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
So I, I just emailed my notes to all of you and understand that the notes will be added to the record. Basically, I just wanted to share my approach, and I'm sharing the notes because they're kind of lengthy. And what I did was, I had two goals. One was in, in adding to the goals that Teresa had already set for herself. I wanted to make sure we were highlighting the breadth of what you're already doing. And it certainly made the document a little longer. But I, I wanted to be sure that, 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 you know, for instance, with the extern means that you have, you know, if we keep just the, the set list of, of partner meetings that you have, Teresa, there are quite a few of them from, you know, and committees and AMST and Reimagine Minnesota. The other thing was coming out of the SMART goal work. I wanted to add a little bit of a measure to them so that we're all a little more clear. So I added, for example, a relative weight to each goal in terms of how much time we should expect out of the total to be spent on that particular item. So for example, goal one, it's mostly board work. So Teresa, that shouldn't be too, you know, too much of a, of a time investment for you. The other part was recognizing, again, going back to my statement about evaluation being a real project. If in your weekly updates, you include statements to identify how your projects, that, how your activities that week tie back to these goals, then when it's time for us to get to the mid-year check-in, you already have that documentation in place, and it's simply a matter of going back and, you know, pulling together what, what you, what you would like to pull together. And then at the end of the year, it's also not, not quite as much of a project. Couple of minor edits, I think on goal two, understanding that, you know, you're not obviously doing all of the work. But I, I just wonder, can we say, with the caveat of COVID, right, not knowing what we're gonna be doing, implement the new district strategic roadmap? That's just a question. And then I know in your last set of goals, you had also included a financial report, preparing and submitting an annual report to the school board concerning expected and unexpected revenue expenditure changes for all funds for the current fiscal year and for the following three years. I didn't want to lose sight of that. I think that's important information, and I really appreciate it when that, when you first brought it to us.
I think that was one of the MSBA elements. So I'll go back.
Kind of is where the last can be additional.
Chair Alt, you're breaking up. I can't hear. I don't know about the others. I can't hear what you're saying.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Take them out a little bit, yeah.
Let me check my connection. Is that better? Is, is that better? Okay. So then, yep, better. Okay. So then looking at goal four, that's really where I wanted to really celebrate in your goals, every, like everything that you're doing internally and externally. And also kind of adding an element, going back to Darcy's comment of recognizing that you are in the schools, and maybe there are other additional conversations that you might be having, like planning individual meetings with principals throughout the year. And I don't know that you're not doing that. This is just, and you can see it's all broken down. Another question on the, I, I don't, this is something we could certainly talk about. The monthly review of progress in the pre-K-12 pathway school rollout. That's gonna be a huge progress, project. And I think in particular, supporting our middle schools is, is gonna be really important. And, and I just wanted to call that out in the school setting conversation. Beyond that, I really, I, you know, there are a couple other minor edits, but I really appreciated really winnowing this, the, the, the annual goals to this document, recognizing, and, and we'll figure out where we're gonna land with the evaluation tool itself. I agree with Eric that being able to have year-over-year comparison to a similar document makes a lot of sense to me. But, you know, I'd, I'd reserve any, any, you know, comment until you have a chance to think more about it. And I guess the big one, just one question. Are board members comfortable with relative weights on those goals? Yeah.
I hadn't really considered it before now, but I do like the idea.
And I'll ask of, of Teresa and also of everyone else in terms of the manageability of having Teresa, you know, in her weekly updates to us, provide kind of a snapshot of, of how the, the weeks, how the week ties back to these goals. Is that manageable? Is it something that folks would like to see?
As long as she doesn't have to write a dissertation on Friday before she has to go home on, on that. I, I, after a long week, I've appreciated the, the reports we've gotten. So if she just does highlights, I'm comfortable with that.
And it could just be a simple breakdown, right? Like you have two goals that you can call out for that week. Did these couple of things, you know? It, it definitely, DeeDee, to your point, thank you, yeah, it doesn't need to be a dissertation. All right, anything else? All right. So finally, we have the board planning document. And everybody received, has gotten access to it? Yep, okay. Originally, the plan had been to sit in a room and look at a screen and talk through this together. So, but I did want to bring this forward, you know, as part of a formal board meeting so that, you know, if there are any immediate comments or suggestions that you guys want to make now, certainly we can do that. If you have feedback that you'd like to provide after tonight, certainly, you know, I can, I can take that as well. So it starts with basically the year starting in July and identifying by month. And this might actually be helpful in some of the onboarding materials, whether it's for candidates or for newly elected board members, just to see, you know, the various buckets that we work in for development, goal setting and self-evaluation, superintendent evaluation, budget. And I did, with budget, I did add a comment about COVID. Nothing written in stone because that's out of our power, but I did want to at least note that for this year. And then setting board priorities, onboarding and mentoring of board members, and then including our policy and legislative work too.
The, the only thing that I see missing, Abigail, is like in September to do like our, like the candidate, the candidates who have filed that Q and A session that we have in our goals. And it wouldn't be every year, you know? But that is probably, I mean, a September-ish timeline kind of for that, or October.
Yep, got it. Good catch. Thank you.
Cheryl?
Yes, Dr. Battle?
Can I make a couple of comments about COVID considering the update we received today?
Yeah.
So actually, in August, we hope to present the reopening of school plan because I believe it was July 27th, we'll get the final MDE guidance. And then just regarding budget in November, Lisa and I hope to get back to the regular cycle. So the audit, just, and then December, the truth in taxation. And then, so we're hoping to get back on the regular schedule. So just wanted to make those notes, but as you know, the flexibility and every evolving with COVID, it's good to have those notes there.
Yep.
Thank you.
So audit and truth in taxation.
Great.
Got it. Any other comments or questions or thoughts that we might want to take some time, a little bit of time to digest it and come back to it? Okay. I think that's the last. Yep. All right. So we'll leave it that I will make those changes. And board members individually, if you wanna share your feedback, if there are any other recommended changes, I'll take them. And, and if we need to, you know, come back in another workshop just to review this one last time in August, then we can do that. Review this one last time in August, then we can do that. All right. Well, this has been one of our longer meetings, so thank you, everybody. It's, I think, our longest, our longest virtual meeting, so. Thank you and. Have a great weekend and we will see you sometime soon in August.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.